The bond media, my task go to join the Lord's prayer. My Father, my Father, heaven, heaven, I will keep you down. This is the day of your birth. It's a process that says it's not just temptation. Then it's true. I'm speaking. Thank you. I believe it's far from times. The Republicans are saying, oh, they should be proud. Welcome everybody to our meeting, glad to have you here. Citizen communication, I believe almost everyone has signed up for a specific item. So we'll call on them when we get to that item. Okay, if you want to, if you want to speak now, that's fine.
Robert Luthwick, 909 East Parkwood, Arlington, Texas. Mayor, I just wanted to bring something to your attention that I think is important for the citizens of Arlington, especially regarding ethics in the city. The fact is, is that there's several issues that need to be addressed. One of them is tonight and it has to do with the agenda item. That's an executive session for Sun Valley Aviation. Just like Sun Valley Aviation, Mr. Mesmer yourself are well aware of. They, they have a tendency to sue the city and cost taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars. And I just wanted to, I want y'all to reflect on the fact that the city ethics ordinance says that if there's a perceived conflict of interest, that we should, as elected officials for the protection of taxpayers, step aside. And I believe that yourself and Mr. Mesmer have taken literally thousands of dollars in campaign donations from these principal characters involved in Sun Valley Aviation. So I would just ask that y'all seriously consider not risking any ethics complaints against yourself and Mr. Mesmer on behalf of the taxpayers when this agenda item goes into executive session. Cause I don't think that there's a perception there that you could be fair and balanced with the duration of time that y'all have taken campaign donations specifically to Robert Ferris or whoever. The other thing that I want to bring up is that the airport board is on the agenda right now for the charter change. The fact is that there's some unfinished business that occurred on a February 6th meeting that involves another conflict of interest. And that is considering the actions of Robert Ferris and Nick Castiglione. When they participated, they declared themselves to be in conflict, but yet filed to file a conflict of interest form designated their conflicts. And I just appreciate if you would clean that up.
The others are part of the specific items. So that item one is a presentation of. You have to sign up by 4:00 PM. What, what is the item that you? Okay, we'll call you at item. You want to speak now instead of wait? Okay, come on up.
My name is Bill Snyder and I reside at 2801 East Harrison, trailer number four, or 74, excuse me. Good evening, Mayor, council members, fellow Arlington citizens. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in regards to agenda item 30C. Members of the Harlingen Professional Firefighters Association, the Harlingen Fire Department are up for a new contract agreement which covers pay, pension, and workplace conditions. In the last four years of the prior contract, association members have contended with staffing shortages, contributing to increased pension liability resulting in pension membership shoring up the losses with benefits decreases and redirecting a year of raises for a supplemental capital infusion. The COVID pandemic took its toll on association members and their families while still promptly reporting to work once recovered and cleared to do so. Association members participated in vaccination programs by opting to be vaccinated and delivering vaccinations to the public as well. I acknowledge that some efforts have been made to compensate all city employees. And that too is great warranted merit. That too is warranted merit. From filling and loading sandbags to providing immediate loss recovery to incident victims, members of the Harlingen Professional Firefighters Association are the one stop, get the job done, and always reliable individuals that we citizens want to keep in Harlingen. With honor, dignity, I want to encourage the Harlingen elected officials to consider a contract worthy of these professional firefighters, some who are in attendance today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else, anyone else want to speak now? Just come forward, state your name, your residence address.
My name is Silvestre Trevino. And I'm here to talk about the reopening of holes number 17, 19 to 27, Tony Butler. And one of the reasons that I know that a lot of people don't have the time to play 18 holes. And so they do their best to go to the closest golf course and play eight to 10 holes. But more than, more than anything is the fact that I was raised across the street from Tony Butler. So I had two of my uncles that were Kettys there and my whole entire family, for the exception of three, are playing golf. And, and that's because the reason is, because I, I taught him how to play golf. And, and I still have three grandkids that are in, in high school and they still want to learn how to play golf. And it's important for my family that, that they get to learn how to play golf in those nine holes. Because it's, it's a slow pace. And, and it's important that we keep those people that are experts or that play better to refrain from hitting one of our grandkids. So I appreciate the fact that I learned how to play there and all my grandkids, my, my son and my grandsons and my granddaughters and my friends. So that, that to us, that's very important. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This time we're going to go on to item one, which is presentation by the Rotters Road Rave Special Recognition.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, the Rotary Club of Harlingen has a very special presentation. We would like to ask Mr. Joshua Minus to step forward, please. The Rotary Club of Harlingen, every year gives several, I think five distinguishing awards, one of which is given to a community member who shows service above self. This award was named after Bill Card, who most of us in this room know who that was. He's also a past president of our club and a former district governor for Rotary. We'd like to present to you the Bill Card Community Service Award for your service in our community for 2020, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm just humbly honored for the surprise. Thank you for here to serve. Thank you.
Well, it's very, very well deserved and we all join in congratulating you. And you've done such a wonderful job for this community during the pandemic. And you deserve to be recognized. And I know that, that, you know, maybe you got four hours of sleep a night over the last year and a half. So we thank you, thank you for going above and beyond. That was a great recognition, Josh. Congratulations. All right, item two is a presentation of proclamations proclaiming first July 21st, 2021 as Gonzales Family Day. So Gonzales Family Day. They're here. The United Valleys, Marisa, Dallas. Come on up, Ray. Come up. I want to hear something. Thank you. It's been on yesterday. We have proclamation in here. We're all invited to the party. And we're all proud of the plan. We're paying, at least like Gonzales, trying to do crazy out here. Competing at the local barbecue after watching brother and sister that were in the prior year. President, obviously, in session, they agreed to watch two hours, four hours, a lot of anything. Being as a first time being, late since six, Donald, two, three days.
All right.
I signed up online and everything, so proud of myself.
Just said your name and your residence address.
Wayne Lowery, 2614 Clifford Harlingen, Texas. I just want to take a few moments, first off, to congratulate our new city commissioners, and the reappointment of our city commissioner, Michael Mesmar. Want to congratulate you on your hot fought victory and your passion for the city. To take on such a responsibility is, is something that many of us really don't care for. And you've taken it on, and we congratulate you and thank you for your willingness to serve. I do want to say to the, to the mayor and the commission, I love this city, this is my adopted home, I moved here in 2007, bought a house in 2009. And just like you, I want to see Harlingen successful, I want to see Harlingen grow, I want to see Harlingen be the best Harlingen it can be. And I believe that is your desire and your wish as well, or you wouldn't be sitting where you are today. I do want to share a passage from scripture, some of you know, I'm a bit of a preacher, Proverbs 11:14 says, "Where there is no counsel, the people fall; but in the multitude of counselors there is safety." There have been some items on the agenda, I'm not going to talk about anything specific, previous, today, future, but I want to talk about philosophy. And I think it's very important as a commission to realize that there are citizens, many citizens in this, in the city, that want to serve in variety capacities. And I think it's important that we use wisdom and discernment when we evaluate the direction of the city, in the direction we should go. And so I would encourage you to take note of who you seek counsel from. I would encourage you to, to pray about and carefully consider the things that you are going to be presented, but ultimately that you would lean on each other and specifically lean on the citizens for help and assistance.
Thank you very much. I have free approval of the minutes of the special joint meeting of the commission for all committee report February 26, 2021, and the regular committee of 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There are none.
Second.
Speaker say aye.
Aye.
Expose like sign, motion carries. Set agenda items for three. Second, all speakers say aye.
Aye.
Expose like sign, motion carries. Item five, pass. Item six, consideration possible action to award the employee health group insurance for fiscal year 2021, 2022, naming the insurance agents authorized the city manager to sign the contract as recommended by Scott Gibbs.
Mayor, city commissioners, Scott Gibbs is here to present this site.
Mayor, commissioners, glad to be with you in person this year to present the benefit plan renewals. We're going to talk about the health plan, and then we've got some other plans of life and AD and D disability to go through, so. I'm going to spend just a little bit of time to talk about the health plan history like I traditionally kind of do. We'll talk about the marketing analysis and the results that came back from the RFP, talk a little bit about medical disruption analysis, proposed contribution scenarios for next year for the health plan, and then briefly cover the dental plan review, the vision plan review, the life and AD and D and disability renewal as well. And then we'll have recommendations for you after the presentation. So the health plan history, so our current carriers, Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So our loss ratio with Blue Cross and Blue Shield from October 1st, 2020 to May 31st, 2021, it's about 148%. Now what that means is basically we've paid premiums to Blue Cross in the amount of $4,558,000. They've paid claims in the amount of $6,748,000. So, you know, they, this past year, they've, they've lost, you know, almost $2 million on our account, and we just had some significant large claims that have hit. I will say that May claims have stabilized, I'm hoping that June claims stabilize as well. Obviously, it makes it a challenge at renewal when, when we're kind of running like this because the underwriters tend to look at it. We finished last year, so October 1st, 2019 to September 31st, right about a 94% loss ratio. So that, you know, still 6.5 million in paid premium, about 6.1 million in paid claims. What a carrier's desired loss ratio is, is about 85%. Basically, 85% is used to pay the claims, and then they have 15% to administer the claims, keep the lights on, you know, provide customer service and things of that nature. So really, you know, in a perfect world, if you had an 85% loss ratio, then they would probably come out with what would be a medical pharmacy trend renewal of probably somewhere around 8%, and then we would kind of negotiate from there. So the challenge was the original renewal from Blue Cross came in at 41.4%. So that's just was, you know, something we could not accept, so we did go out to bids, we did, I'll talk about that in a minute, we received one competitive quote. We did go back for a best in final, we gave Blue Cross a chance to sharpen the fence light, provided some additional information from, with May claims, and their best in final came in at about a 34%, 34% renewal. So when we took it out to bid, you can see we took it to several carriers. A lot of carriers did decline to quote just due to, due to the claims. We did, Aetna did provide a quote, but it was a self-funded quote that was not competitive. But we did receive competitive quotes from United Healthcare. So this is the Blue Cross renewal, Blue Cross came in, like I said, at 41, we negotiated it down to 34, with the plans matching. So, you know, again, that was just something we, you know, we couldn't do. So, you know, United Healthcare, you know, they originally, you know, they came in, we were able to negotiate down with them. Very similar plans, I'll point out, the, the main difference, we do, we would be removing the out of network benefit, but currently, right now, about 99.5% of our claims are in-network. This still would protect employees against, if they go into a hospital and there's a second surgical physician, an anesthesiologist, or someone that's not in the network, this plan would still pay for that at the, at the network level. These plans, everything ingrained is, is actually kind of an increase in benefit. So we would be currently, right now, on two of the plans, we do have an in-hospital $500 per admission deductible. That would go away. One thing I like about the United Healthcare plans, which is a benefit for the employees, is that any child under age 19, it's a $0 copay for them to go to the physician, okay? So whereas the, the other copays are, you know, $35 or $70, when the child goes in, it actually is a lower copay. Also, the pharmacy deductible would go away. There is a slight increase on the third tier of the, there's slight increase on the third tier of the pharmacy, but there's actually a reduction on the generic, which is where the majority of our people go. So at the end of the day, we were able to get this plan in right at about 16.9%. So we felt like this was a very good plan. I wanted to show you kind of a disruption analysis. So we basically took claims for this current year. So we took October through April claims, and we matched them up, the providers. So I think you can see that on a percentage of providers in-network, actually UHC is a little bit higher there at 98% versus 97%. On the percentage of services performed in-network, Blue Cross is at 99.98, but UHC was at 99.97. On the percentage of visits in-network, Blue Cross was at 99.56, UHC was right, pretty even with them at 99.41. Our percentage of claimants in-network were, it would actually increase under UHC to 99.34, and our percentage of paid claims in-network would stay relatively the same at 99.99%. So again, the network match is very good compared to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And so, you know, that is the, you know, our recommendation. Now looking at contribution scenarios, we've provided two. The first contribution scenario is passing that, that 17% on to both the employee and to the city, working with the city manager's office and the HR department. You know, if the city, scenario two is if the city would pick up the additional amount, it's roughly about $120,000, then the employees would not have an increase, and this is actually built into the budget.
And that's what staff is recommending, commissioners, that we go with this plan. Staff is recommending that we go ahead and pick up the cost difference for the employee side, so their rates stay the same as they are today.
And that will cost the city how much?
Another $122,000.
A year?
A year.
And again, these renewals are, are on an annual basis, so again, we would, you know, next year, I'm hoping, you know, hoping the claims will actually come down.
This is a fiscal year, on February 1st?
We talked about that as a budget.
Yes, sir, that's something we talked about during those chats. I believe with what we have budgeted, we can cover the cost difference for the employees, so they don't realize any increase in their rates, their contribution rates.
So that's kind of on the medical side, we do have our dental plan renewal. The current carrier is Aetna, they did give us a rate pass for this year, and they gave us a second-year rate cap of 3%. Employees tend to be happy with Aetna, so we would recommend renewing with Aetna. This is kind of what the plan looks like. And again, we've got the, the flat rate for this year and rate cap of 3% for the next year.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
Hold on a second. So these are separate items on the agenda, mayor. Item six is the health insurance plan, item seven is the dental, and then we have one additional. But if we could go on separately.
Okay, so we're stopping place on the health group insurance. Does anybody have any questions on item six for Scott or Dan or Everett?
It's part of a recommendation, the United Health, we knew, they submitted the agents as the current agents that we currently have, so we're asking that we accept their proposal along our current agents, which is Shepherd Walton King and Texas Insurance Service. And we also understand that they're going to honor the available, through the end of the year.
So that's part of the staff's recommendation to, to enter into the contract with United Healthcare, and to name the agents after this name, and to authorize.
To pick up the cost difference.
Differential on the employee part of the premium. Is there a motion to?
Question. On the agents, did you not shop out agents? No, I'm asking, are you a consultant?
Yeah, I, I don't shop agents, that's not, I, I just, I just do the health plan. So, and, and the carriers can choose, you know, which agents they, you know, they quote.
Have we, have we shopped out the agents, maybe, because they charge a fee, right?
The, the agents, it's the carrier that submits who they recommend as their agents. We don't, we don't pay a fee, carriers are the ones that pay the fee.
Okay, so they, they bet their own, they do their own.
Yes.
I have a question. How many times have we had the same agent for the health insurance?
For my, I've been here 15 years, and they've been the same agents all.
For 15 years?
I've been here 15, I don't know how long other than that, but they do a good job, so usually there's a reason to seek a change, we usually try to, but in this one, there was, they were the only ones that were submitted with a United Health proposal. Other years we've gotten, or we have a choice, where they'll submit a proposal with several other agents. And in those years, we'll tell you, you know, there's several that were recommending this one or another one. And this one, from I remember from the, from the proposal, they were, they were the primary ones that were being selected by them.
Are they the only ones or the primary ones?
Well, I don't remember exactly how the guys.
They were the only agents listed on the proposals that came in this year.
So nobody else wanted to take a shot and say, hey, I can be an agent?
We didn't, again, the carriers listed them as the, as the agents proposing, so.
So the carriers being united?
Can, can we request?
Blue Cross.
Can we request a search for that, or recommend anybody else?
We can, you can always do that, you know, you could do RFP for agent services. I know that they've done a good job helping the city, and they work hand in hand with the Everett's team. The proposals that we did get in had both Shepherd Walton and King and Texas Insurance Agency, so that's, that's what we spreadsheet, spreadsheted here today.
But I always look at, they're doing a great job, fantastic, and if there's an opportunity to save money and, and have somebody that could provide equal service, it's worth a look at. The agents help, the agents help with the enrollment?
Yes, the agents not only help with enrollment, but they also have a software that they use for enrollment purposes and to maintain everything, it's called the Navigator. And this year with the pandemic, we're able to enroll our folks online using that, that program. So it really cut down on any in-person meetings and kept our employees safe and all that, so. I mean, that was a big plus this last year, so.
That's another.
Sure, sure they probably do, but.
So it's important, and this year in particular, it would be important to have experienced and qualified agents, because we're going to be switching carriers, switching carriers, and sometimes there could be hiccups in transferring the business from one to the other. We want to make sure everybody gets enrolled. I know we had a nightmare situation one time when we, there were some, there were delays, and we had employees literally dying, could not get their medications because there was a delay, and we couldn't switch over, and it was because you had that combination.
And I know that one of the things that's, that's an issue is that we have a short timeframe for the enrollment. So we normally try to get it as late as we can to make sure we get the best rates possible, to get all the data, to make the, the best recommendation. But then that kind of limits us when they enroll, because we have to enroll by August, so we can start deducting in September. So trying to watch for agents may be a disruption that may have an impact on the points, just so.
Okay, so let me ask a question, so who puts the plan together? Is it the agent or the carrier?
We, as a consultant, we put the RFP together that goes out to the carriers, and then we do work, we work with the agents, we keep them notified.
My question? Who did the plan together, like this plan you proposed? That was put together by yourself as a consultant? Was it put together by United?
It's.
Put together by Shepherd Walton King?
We put, so we put it together, we put the RFP together, we, the consulting, we make recommendations for plan changes and things of that nature. They do work on the backside with the carrier and try to do negotiate, the two agents do as well.
So, understanding, Greg, they only work with Shepherd Walton King, not any other agent?
No, they, so they, they only work with Shepherd Walton King and Texas Insurance Agency on this, on, on your account.
Right, so, yeah. So is it fair to say they could have worked with a different agent, maybe come up with a different scenario?
They, they could have done that, but nobody, I mean, it is a public bid, it goes out. You know, we, we send it out through purchasing to the carriers, and then it's at the discretion of the carriers if, you know, if they're going to, if, if an agent approaches them, then, you know, if an agent approaches them, then, then they can use that agent, so.
So in this particular case, if I'm hearing you correctly, no other agent approached United?
Not that I know of, no other agent. The only, our, the only responses we got in were tied to, to Texas Insurance Agency and Shepherd Walton King.
All right, any, any other questions? Agents are, are here.
Just one last question right here. Who's your contact with United Healthcare?
My contact with United Healthcare is a self-funded Brian Norton. I know they worked on this jointly with the Houston office, so.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the staff's recommendation?
My second.
Motion, second, any other discussion? All voters say aye.
Aye.
Expose like sign, motion carries. Item seven, is consideration possible action to remove the dental insurance, Davis Vision Insurance, Unum Life and AD and D insurance plans to the city of the project discovered in 2021, 2022, with no increased cost, and to authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
So yeah, so the dental plan, as I said earlier, is the current carrier is Aetna. It, they did give us a rate pass for next year and a 3% rate cap the following year. So that is, is what they gave us, this is kind of the parameters of the plan. So there will be no increase to the employees, and, and this plan is paid for entirely by the employees. The city does not, does not have any dollars tied up in the dental plan, so. On the vision, so the current carrier Davis Vision is under a rate guarantee. We do have a rate guarantee with them until October 1st, 2024. Again, this plan is paid for entirely by the employees. And then the life and disability renewal, current carrier is Unum, we are under rate guarantee. There is a city portion, the city pays 11 and a half cents per 1,000 of coverage. The voluntary life and AD and D and long-term disability is employee paid. Again, we are under a two-year rate guarantee until 10/1, 2023. And for 2021, open enrollment, Unum offered a true open enrollment, so that means that people that potentially have become uninsurable can actually insure up into the evidence of insurability amount without any medical questions. So the recommendations would be to renew the current dental plan with Aetna, renew the current vision plan with Davis, and renew the current life, AD and D, and LTD plans with Unum.
Anybody have any thoughts on the dental and the vision? Is there a motion to approve recommendation?
Motion to approve. Thank you.
Any discussion? All voters say aye.
Aye.
Expose like sign, motion carries. Item eight, consideration possible action to approve the city's insurance consultants' recommendation for new coverage to consider going to RFPs for fiscal year.
Mayor, city commissioners, windstorm is up for renewal this year. Some of the rates that we project that could happen, we need a guidance from the city commission, whether to seek proposals or seek to renew. We have our consultants from, also from McGriff Company, but they're will be talking specifically about the windstorm coverage.
Thank you, thank you, mayor and commissioners. My name's Robert Wagner, senior vice president of Public Andy with McGriff. We have a short presentation here, just to kind of go over the upcoming windstorm insurance renewal. So we can get started on that. We're going, we're going to kind of give a quick update on the property market. And we went out to bid last year through our, the RFP process, and then this year we are recommending renewal. But really, the short version on the property insurance market, the conditions have not really changed. We've had three of the five.
Past insured loss years as they reported, in the last five years, since, last four years, actually. So the insurance carriers have been hit pretty hard over the last, since 2016 started. And we expect double-digit rate increases, potentially changes in the windstorm deductible terms. Those are expected right now that are across the board, we're seeing that with all of our health professional renewals. So when we look to this year's renewal, we start with last year, we went through the RFP process last year. The city previously purchased their windstorm insurance through TWIA, it's Windstorm Insurance Association. That is actually, you know, the intent of that program is kind of the, the insurance, the last resort, and their pricing was very high. The city went, went RFP last year, we received two proposals, and of the two, we received a very, very good proposal from Victor Insurance, it's a significant insurance, premium decrease last year, about a $224,000 decrease in premium last year, so it was a significant decrease. So that, that program actually improved some of the other terms, including the windstorm deductible, approved to avoid a certain limitation over the previous 2%, so that was also advantageous. City awarded that insurance last year to Victor Insurance for one year with more optional one-year terms, which is for you this year. This far out, the firm and final renewal processing terms are not yet available, but we have had multiple discussions, we're very in the market every day, but we've had multiple discussions with Victor Insurance, and they're indicating that a premium increase in the 15 to 20% range is expected. That is very consistent, and potentially better than what we're seeing in the market. We do not expect there to be any better options, better coverage of terms or premium available. And so we've, we've received this very, very good and beneficial rate last year, to a 15 to 20% increase on that, it's still be expected to be the best available in the market. We go out to bid this year, go out to RFP this year, we don't expect to receive anything better. But really, the, the concern would be if we are going out every year, shopping the coverage every year, when, especially under these current market conditions, it actually could have a negative impact, and the carriers would just loop, maybe not have interest, just decline, decline just because it's never yet bid. There's a negative impact there that, that, that we do like to avoid, and we are recommending that the city renew its coverage with Victor Insurance and exercise its first year one-year option to renew. Be glad to take any questions.
If I have any questions, recommendations to renew insurance?
Staff's recommendation, I'm just, last year, we were paid out of the general fund about $200,000 for windstorm. Last year it dropped to something like $88,000, so we saw a significant increase. In our current budget, we've budgeted that potential increase. So our recommendation is to follow the recommendation or consultant, and just, we don't have the renewal rates, because they normally don't give them out till thirty days before the renewal is set. It's a little bit of a guessing game, but I trust the consultants.
When is the renewal date?
October 1st.
Okay, so with homeowners, with windstorm, if there's a trockety disturbance in the Gulf, one cannot get windstorm insurance while it's out there, but does that, does that apply to commercial?
So, that is, I'm with the consultants.
Okay. Okay.
Ah, I apologize, I didn't fully hear the question, we're talking about the current length, uh, the.
Yes, uh, the, um, the renewal date is October 1st. Should there be a tropical storm or greater in the Gulf of Mexico, does this delay us getting coverage?
No.
Uh, no, I mean, we would not expect it to impact the 10-1 renewal date, it has the coverage in place. Um, we would, you know, the, the, the duration of the storms, uh, we certainly, if there's, if there's one spinning right down, you know, out, out in front of the Gulf, the, uh, underwriters may, uh, may like to wait till it passes through before they release their quote, but, uh, we would not expect there to be an issue with getting the quotes well in advance of the 10-1, uh, getting the renewal, uh, in place, well in advance of the 10-1 renewal date.
And the, uh, the, the renewal rate, um, the cost of this is, is it based on Cameron County? Or the entire coast of Texas, or the entire Gulf Coast?
Well, all of the, but, uh, play a role in that, uh, you have your, your specific, uh, city-specific loss exposures, properties, locations that you are insuring, uh, and then, and the overall exposures of, uh, specific to that area, region, uh, Gulf Coast, uh, all of that does play a role, yes.
Okay, and then, um, this, I looked you up here, it's a US company doing business globally. So these are different divisions, your US company division, is it, uh, what is its financial ratings?
Robert, I'll take that, Ventus is an A-plus fifteen-minute carrier.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I have a motion.
I have a question here. What's the current, uh?
Wait, there's a, was there a second?
Second.
All right, now, discussion.
What's the current rate right now?
Current rate, they give us a rate per building, and, uh, we're out of the general fund. Like I said, we, there was a, a total of about eighty-eight thousand last year. So, to the general fund, uh, fifteen, twenty percent, it'd be fifty, eighty-eight thousand.
I want to make sure I understand this. So right now, we're looking at eighty-eight thousand, that's what it was last year?
That's for the general fund, because in our policy, we include, uh, waterworks, and they, uh, they pay for their portion of it. We also, the enterprise funds are also split up into that, which would be, uh, like sanitation, they pay for the coverage of their own buildings, our golf course space for the coverage of their building, and so on.
Okay.
The one that I work primarily with is for the general fund, that's why, which is the highest one.
So we can estimate that there's going to be maybe a fifteen percent increase?
Fifteen, twenty.
Can we find a way to cap that? We don't want to be surprised like we did with Hercon, if I'm not mistaken? With our electric bill?
Well, there's, if, if we get the renewal content, it's not, uh, saved by the available budget of funds. Uh, there are, I mean, we would look at some options then, and work through some options then to, to find ways to reduce the premium to get within the budget of funds. We currently have a very, very good and low and advantageous, uh, wind deductible that is lower than what's normally available in the market. Certainly, we'll keep that if some of you can, but that would be one area where you could, uh, get it, you know, we just raise it up to more to two percent, which is more, more consistent with the market. Then that would be a way to reduce the premium if we need to, to get within the budget. Uh, right, right now, the way, what we're seeing right now, um, the, the rates are, even though the rate increases, not saying fifteen, we assume, they're pretty, uh, stable at that, those increases. We're not really seeing any, anything, uh, well, well above that, if you're riding that range, we, as we are, uh, we do, we feel like that this is a, this is where we're going to be at, uh, when it comes time to get the renewal.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, is there any other discussion? Always favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, like sign, motion carries. Uh, let's go ahead and take, take one, right, uh, nine, I'm hearing, consider that, or that's in first reading. Especially, you've heard that, the house is four feet, three hundred and thirty-four square feet. Where the municipal family are, one district located at one thirty-six south. Westus Park Lane, area of the district, block eighteen, block one, Westus Park subdivision. And after that, it's Eric's. Is there anybody, anybody here on that item? Yeah, okay. I'll be here, it's going to present it, then we'll call for the public here.
Mayor City Commissioner, good evening, uh, we have a, a request for a storage building in a, in a residential district. And it's an oversized storage building, it's a forty by fifty, a two thousand and twelve feet, and that requires a special use permit. The, uh, address is one forty-six, uh, Westus Park, which is close to Store Place Road, north of Express Market. This is a picture of the property, uh, it has a, a two-story house in the front, and they're proposing the, uh, oversized storage room behind, behind over here. This is the survey of the property, this is the existing house, the driveway, and this is where they're proposing the forty by fifty storage room, and this is a schematic drawing of the building, sixteen feet on the wall, and then seventeen, eight, seventeen feet, eight inches at the maximum height. Area photograph of the neighborhood, this is the subject property, the driveway, the existing house, and then that's where they're proposing the oversized, uh, storage room, storage building. We did receive a petition in opposition to the, uh, special use permit. And the, the petition is in your packet, and the, this map shows the property owners that signed the petition, which are in red and blue. The difference is, the ones in red are within two hundred feet of the subject property, and they count, uh, for the, uh, superma, it's state law says that if it's twenty percent or more of the surrounding property owners within two hundred feet, in opposition, that requires a supermajority vote, which is the case here, is more than twenty percent. So this will require a supermajority vote of the city commission to be approved. But as you can see, the majority of the neighborhood is in opposition to the, to the request. This went before the Planning and Standing Commission on July fourteenth. Two people spoke in opposition to the, uh, SUP request, explaining it is against the digital restrictions. People devalued the other properties and will leave to other similar projects in the neighborhood. The applicants spoke in support of the SUP request and explained that the only people that will be able to see the storage building are the neighbors to the east that submitted a call in support of the request. After some discussion, the Planning and Standing Commission unanimously recommended approval of the SUP request with a five to zero vote, contingent of approval of a drainage report by city staff prior to issues of a building permit. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, so this is a slab and a metal build?
Correct.
Will there be electricity?
I'm sure yes.
Plumbing?
No, 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 no plumbing, just electricity.
Okay, exactly, take your presentation.
Yes.
I'll be here, uh, if I have any questions, I'll be here before the public hearing. Okay, uh, I'm, I'm open to public hearing, and, uh, I think we have some group signed up to speak on this item, item nine. Never roll, roll, and, uh, look, yeah, it's, it's signed up. You can hear the back. Are, are the applicants here who'd like to speak for it, or, uh, speak for or against this special use permit?
Thank you for hearing our concern. We have approximately twenty-nine neighbors that have signed this petition in opposition.
Please state your name and, and, uh, your residence.
Apologize, uh, my name's Raoul Pena the third, and I live within the two hundred feet of where this proposed metal storage building is going to be built. We have Westus Park subdivision restrictions that completely do not allow a building of this, of this structure. We have twenty-nine red neighbors. Uh, I, we got about ten neighbors that all want to, uh, participate as well, and we have, we have printed this out, actually, the, the, the planning department printed this out. Clearly, there is a majority that don't want this within the two hundred feet. There's only one neighbor that's okay with it, but it, it's going to have detrimental effects to the rest of the neighborhood. Especially if one gets allowed, then anybody, it's going to open the door for whoever else wants to build a structure of this size. The proposed metal building is forty by fifty, and it's approximately sixteen feet tall at the walls. At the pitch, it's going to be closer, about twenty feet. It's going to be an obstruction for all the, they, all the neighbors around there, so.
Do you have listed restrictions?
Yes, sir, and I've made several copies, if you gentlemen would like, so copy each.
If you want to pass them out and hand them to, uh, Mr. Serontis.
Sure. These restrictions, by the way, have been in effect for all the properties at Westus Park Lane for over twenty years, so, uh, actually, more than that, probably twenty-five years, and we have all abided by them. I'm currently building my, my, uh, home, my personal residence.
May I ask you a question, so, so you have a homeowners association, or?
There is a, an architectural control committee, and it completely violates it, if I'm not mistaken, okay.
My question is.
Okay.
Okay, uh, my question is, 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 uh, so you have a board?
There is a board, sir.
Do you have meetings?
We do, we do not currently have meetings, however, if you want to build something, we go to Mr. Ferris, uh, Frank Ferris. He's, he's the, he's the, the, the man, I guess, the president of the Architectural Control Committee, he and his wife. We submit floor plans to him. Uh, there's, there's three, and, and he appoints, here's three, and he appoints whoever, uh, you know, wants to participate in the meeting.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes, and there were regularly, regular meetings held previously.
And so on, on the list of these restrictions, right, these are, these are listed, all your restrictions?
For that neighborhood.
For, for that neighborhood. And it's a neighborhood in compliance with all these restrictions?
Yes, yes, sir. You, you drive by there, it's a beautiful neighborhood, it's, yeah, everybody, even if, if you were to put a garden shed or a tool shed, the, the architectural control, uh, the, the, the restriction, subdivision, subdivision restrictions require that it matches your house. If it's a brick house, stucco house, you, you make your shed to match your house, to conform with the house. And, and clearly, a metal storage building like that, at that size, it doesn't, it's awful.
So there's no other restrictions in that neighborhood, anybody else's house that, that's not following restrictions?
I can't speak for the fifty properties that are on there.
Well, I mean, but you have oversight, right, I mean, you have a board that's in charge of making sure that these restrictions are met.
There is, yes, yes.
So, so, I, I just want to make sure I understand you, but, but, there, there, all of those homes in that neighborhood are, are in compliance with the restrictions?
When we built our homes, yes, we were, we were handed this one.
Currently, I'm not, yes, people can build homes and they add, you know, you add to your property as you go. Right, well, my question is, is currently, all the homes that are in your neighborhood that are oversaw and have, have oversight with this board, aren't they all in compliance with the restrictions that are set for this document?
I will say, yes, that, that, that have been permitted and requested permission. If you requested permission and got an actual permit from the city, then, I, I mean.
So, so you do have, um, times where they, they've submitted, and they've been granted, they've been granted something that DVH is not.
I'm not sure about that. I, I, I know, I know that, for one, is, we do submit our floor plans to the board for approval, and that has been the, the, with every neighbor, that has been the case with everybody who builds in that neighborhood.
So, it is, because it's not a city restriction, right?
What's that?
It's not a city restriction, it's a restriction from your board.
It is a dean restriction, it is a dean restriction.
And so, again, so, the, the number of properties that belong to that organization are in compliance with restrictions?
Yes, yes.
Did, you said there were other board members on there?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you said Mr. Ferris?
Mr. Ferris, and then, of course, they appoint people from time to time.
And who are those people on the board?
Ms. Rebecca Ferris, that is, uh, Mr. Ferris's wife, and that is, uh, let me see, I have a copy. They're on, they're actually out here in the lobby waiting to also be called on.
Okay, so you said there was three appointments, is that all that, Mr., okay.
That I'm, that I know, I'm sure, I, I've, I've, I've been, uh, I've owned that property for four years, so I don't know exactly who they appoint from time to time, or, you know, or, or who they, you know, gather at, for a meeting. Uh, I'm not totally aware of everybody that attends, but I know that I did go to him to go get my plans.
When you say him, who are you talking about?
Mr. Ferris, Mr. Frank Ferris, he is, you'll see, uh, the Westus Park subdivision restrictions, um, he is on the last page as president of the Westus Park Development Corporation.
So he would be considered the chair, and then there's three more, or two more including him? I didn't understand that.
Uh, I believe it's he and his wife that are, that are on this, uh, subdivision restriction.
So basically, they make all the decisions?
I wouldn't say they make all the decisions, um, they're, they're, like I said, we, we go to them, they, they, we, we, we talk to them, and, right, they get, they make recommendations, and they're trying to keep the community, there's a, a set of, like, hey, two thousand square feet, you know, we, this is Masonry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, because I was noticing that there's a property that's adjacent that, there's a metal storage building already there that's not even connected to the, on the lot, there's not even, this information we got, it's not even connected to a house, but it's there, and it's been there for a while, but there was no complaints about that.
That is, no, 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 there's complaints, that is owned by Mr. Dal Duncan, that is an empty property. It is currently, that, that garden shed, really concerned garden shed, when Mr. Secunda wants to build is three times that. So if people don't like that one, this one's going to be three times bigger. So, that one is not permitted, not on a concrete slab. This one that they're proposing, that's going to be a concrete slab, that's going to be a permanent building. That one is on a collegiate pad, and the property's currently being surveyed, so they're fixing to make some moves on that property.
Would it be safe to say? I'm just wanting to remind you, but there are other people out here that want to, to, to be safe to say.
I.
There's been, uh, structures built in that neighborhood without permits.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, you'd be sure to say that, obviously, there's one that is not permitted.
I think there's a few, that's why I'm, that's why I'm questioning.
Um, unfortunately, sir, we, I mean, you can only do so much, you know, when there's, they've been there for twenty, thirty years, or twenty, twenty-plus years, we can't go around and, hey, you're gutters for these or that. You do what you can, it's something of this magnitude.
But I disagree with you, that if it's a purpose of work, then you're doing selective.
No, 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 there's not, there's not selective, that's, that, this is, we, we, this is twenty-nine neighbors came together, hey, you know what, this is what's being proposed, we disagree, and for, for many reasons.
But in that neighborhood, if there's structures that have been built that are, not only not that are, that are in, in violation of what you have on the document, but they even go to the city and get permits.
Well, I mean, the city, you, you can only do so much as an architectural committee, you can only do so much. Your neighbors will, will leave the trash can outside, your neighbors will do stuff, you can only do so much. And, and, but something like this big, this is something we cannot let go by. You know, we can, we, yes, there's such garden shed, you know what, it's not permanent in nature, it's not permitted, but something this big, we really need to voice our concern, that's what we're doing, sir.
And you have a right to do it, but I'm just.
Thank you.
Concerned with what you do with one, you should do with all.
I, that is fair, sir, I, I understand.
And if you're going to pull a document together, you can say, well, we're not going to force that one.
No, no, that's.
That's not going to do it.
Yes, we.
And, and if I see that, and if they've been, they've been in the neighborhood for that long, and that structure's been allowed to be there, and it's not in compliance with this, then again, I believe it's being selective in, in your.
No, I, I wouldn't, no, it's not being selective, and it's not being targeted, it's twenty-nine neighbors, they all willingly, willingly, uh, signed our petition, there was no persuasion, there was no targeting of any kind. We're, we're, we're fair, like I said, it's, it's a great neighborhood, fair, fair architectural control committee, they're not trying to, you know, body fight for everybody, they're not trying to be pointy-fingered, but something this big does require some attention.
I'd like to, keep going, I'm like, yeah, go ahead, he, he's had his two minutes, and I think we've got some other people to sign up.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time, I won't take from somebody else, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, well, I'm going to, I'm going to start with people that are on the list, and, uh, people, I know that J.B. Garcia and Earl Wellington are on the list to this item, so, if you could call their names, J.B. Garcia and Earl Wellington.
So, if you could call their names, J V Garcia and Earl Wellington.
Not having been able to hear anything else.
If you could just please state your name and your residence address.
Earl Wellington, 142 South Nuaces Park Lane, Harlingen, Texas.
You have two minutes, sir.
Okay, uh, the, not having been able to hear what's going forward before, I'll be very brief, it probably won't take two minutes. But, uh, I will say that I'm very surprised that, uh, that it was entertained to, to approve a special use permit for a structure that's over 13 times the size of the 144 square feet that is allowed under the, without a special use permit. The proposed structure is 2,000 square feet, and it's a, of significant height, 16 feet on the corners and higher in the center. It's, uh, doesn't comply with the deed restrictions that were put in place when the property was sold and should be passed down to each purchaser. And, uh, I, I think, I think it was Mr. Pettis made a comment, uh, at the meeting, uh, when we did the Zoom, and when we had the Zoom, uh, Ms. Sepulveda, there was a lot to speak for 20 minutes or so, and we were just allowed to, uh, to try to get in, but we had a lot of technical trouble with the Zoom, but she was allowed to go there in person, which doesn't seem completely fair to me. Uh, but, uh, the, uh, the, the thing is, I, I just, I guess I kinda lost my train of thought, but, uh, that's, uh, basically my feeling. I, oh, Mr. Pettis had said that, well, they've done everything the right way, so I think it should be approved. That was audible on the Zoom, and, you know, I can, I don't know.
You're talking about Caesar Pettis, right?
I think Renee was in the other.
Oh, because that's me. I'm Renee Pettis.
Were you in the other meeting?
No.
Oh, it was a different one. Okay. But see, the, that's the other thing, I mean, FYI, this whole thing with these meetings and COVID and having such restricted seating is not a good thing. And the Zoom thing is really not very good either, because it didn't work. Today, we didn't have electricity a lot of times, uh, in our neighborhood in the afternoon. So, I, I would suggest somebody look into that. But thank you very much for all your consideration. I was wrong about, uh, Mr. Renee Pettis.
Thank you. All right, thank, uh, ask Mr. Garcia if he signed up for speaking on this item. He's coming. He's, he's peering in at us, but he's not coming.
My name is William Savie. I live at 116 North Nuaces Park. I'm directly behind the proposed house. And, and my understanding is, and I've been in touch with Mr. Duncan, that he's gonna be taking his building down. And I, and I think if that's an issue, I think at very least, we should wait till that happens before we decide to put up another one. And I, I'm, you know, I'm gonna have to stir at this thing all day, every day, behind my house, and that's not something I'm looking for. I can't go out there in my pool and look at, I don't want to be in an industrial park. Sorry, that's it. I said my piece. I'm, I'm, I am very opposed. Different D word.
Okay, thank you. Ask Mr. J V Garcia to come in. Mr. Garcia. Garcia, did you, did you sign up to speak on this item?
This is, uh, item 10, this is the one that I, uh.
Okay, well then.
I'm sorry.
I thought, I, I had a, I misunderstood. I thought you had asked to speak on this item. Is there anyone else like to speak for or against this S U P?
It's the next one, Jay.
Okay, well then.
Good evening. My name's Brad Friedenberg. Uh, my wife, Mom, and I moved here about two months ago. And, uh, we're, we, three weeks ago, we bought the lot right next door to 146. And, uh, yeah, I think there's some confusion about whether this is an HOA law. It's not an HOA law. This is a deed restriction. And so, you know, it's not about whether the HOA enforces it. A deed restriction is a judicial issue. And so, while, while this board, I believe, can, or this, this group can approve the waiving of the R1 restrictions, there's still deed restrictions here, and there are four specific restrictions in the document that, that you've been provided that this barn clearly violates. So, uh, that, that's my opinion. Again, I'm immediately next door, so the thought that there's only one other person that is gonna be affected by this, that's not true. My wife and I bought this, uh, bought this lot three weeks ago, and we found out about two or three days before closing that this was gonna be built next to us. And so, clearly too late for us to change our mind. The reason we chose that neighborhood was because of the beautiful neighborhood and the deed restrictions that would ensure that we remain in that beautiful neighborhood. And so, you know, we're looking at building a house that we can't ensure that we're gonna be able to enjoy that as we go through.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, anyone else like to speak for or against this?
I'm Norma Sepulveda. I'm the, I'm the applicant. I live at 146 South Nuaces Park Lane. Um, I haven't met our neighbors, obviously, since it's a, they just purchased a lot near us. But I will tell you that when we purchased our home seven years ago at Nuaces Park, we did so because we don't have an HOA. And we were not given the deed restrictions when we purchased the home. We were only, um, able to get those deed restrictions later when my husband was trying to see how, what we could build, how far, the setbacks, and things of that nature. And that's when we learned about these restrictions. The reason why, I think, is that we barely learned about them was because there is no committee. There's a husband and wife that lives in the neighborhood, and they developed this beautiful property more than 20 years ago and had an idea to sell all of the homes. So, of course, they had these ideas in place so that the lots could sell, and they did. And so, the majority of the people that have lived there have lived there for a very, very long time. Some, some since the beginning of the, since it was developed. But it was interesting that Mr. Pena said that everybody, you know, for decades has been respecting these deed restrictions, which is absolutely not true. And each of you should have done a packet with the homes. And so, I won't bore you or belabor the point that there's many homes. Lot, these are just a few of the ones, as we drove by, to show you that they are in violation of these deed restrictions. Whether it's a building, whether it's a covert, whether the garage doesn't face the way it's supposed to, whether you have your RV in your, in your driveway, all of those are deed restrictions um, on the document that is supposed to be enforced, but it's not enforced. This committee does not get together. In the seven years that I've been there, I don't think there's been any meetings. There's no minutes. I can't go look to see what happened. If I want to see what happens today.
There's a photo I saw that had like a large scraper, um, tractor type thing, and that, that's not, it wasn't for construction. They actually like parked it there, because I believe whoever owns that house owns that, that property or that vehicle.
That is correct.
And so, the question, the person that said, anyone in an industrial park will get, get holding equipment, or is he supposed to be provided, have actual tractors in, in their backyard that are fully seen from the street?
Yes, um, and the fact that Mr. Duncan is gonna remove his building, I don't know. I don't, I, I'll believe it when I see, when I see it, that's when I'll believe it, but that has been there for over a year.
Your turn. I'm afraid your two minutes are up, but if the commission has any other questions for you, then. Somebody have any other questions for?
Did Mr. Sepulveda?
You were gonna speak, right? All right, thank, all right, thank you all very much. Is there anyone else like to speak for?
Mr. Sepulveda.
I'm Norma Sepulveda. I live there at 146. The, uh, this building that, uh, we're building, um, is gonna be 194 feet from the street. I mean, the only piece, people that will see it is we get directly in front of my driveway and my neighbor. And that's three quarters of a football field, you know, three, two thirds of a football field, way in the back. But these people, there's trees, they're, they're not gonna see it. They're gonna take a look for a minute. The person behind me, same thing, he's gonna have to go look through the tree to see it.
Okay, please address the commission, okay?
Yeah, but anyway, there's a bunch of restrictions over there, uh, in the packet. Nobody's been informed of these for years, so, I mean, just, I mean, I feel like I think, uh.
If I can just take this two minutes for my question. I know, I'm sorry. I, I just wanna reiterate that the city of Harlingen, this commission is not here to impose deed restrictions. So, before you create a special use permit, deed restrictions are not in the power of the commission to enforce. Only the special use permit, and has been recommended by staff and the board. We have, I mean, I feel embarrassed that we even have to be here before you today because a deed restriction matter is not for you to consider. That's something for our neighbors. And if this committee does enforce it, then I think we will enforce them.
All right, thank you. Thank you all very much. Uh, anyone else like to speak for or against this special use permit?
Thank you.
Um, please approach the podium and state your name and residence address.
I'm Norma Sepulveda, and, uh, that last absurd context of being embarrassed. This is a lawyer who's trying to divert your attention from deed restrictions to the S U P at hand. And her husband quantipulates that because we're talking about a 50-foot pitch. Look at what the concerns are of the citizens really around you, drainage. Why? Because we're in a flat area. What type of trees? You saw the area that Mr. Serrano can provide you. There's very few trees that are 50 feet in this city. And Mr. Renee has been, I've been praising lately, to talk about selective. She's allowed to go in person. The rest of us have to go Zoom. So, she's used to privilege, and she's trying to use that privilege tonight by making this absurd contention that you cannot see a building that is five times bigger than Duncan's. Duncan is prudent enough to remove it. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Ferris, can you come forward? Please state your name and, uh, your residence address.
Good evening, Mayor of the Commissioners. My name is Frank Ferris. I live at 137 Nuaces Park Lane. I am the developer of the subdivision that's going on 30 years, and we're very proud of it. I appreciate the Sepulvedas are trying to build a facility to hide their RV and boat. It's actually required by the restrictions. Contrary to their letter to the P and Z, the deed restrictions are still in effect. The vast majority of the residents follow those restrictions. And I realize you don't enforce restrictions, but by the same token, you can give permission for someone to violate them. If you're compelled to, to issue this standard use permit or special use permit, I ask that you impose five conditions to ensure use compatible or complementary to some surrounding properties. And those are that the architectural style matches the home, at least 50% Mason Reveneer, remainder can be stucco or wood, 15-foot side setback, doors not facing the street, and a 5 to 12 roof pitch. If you impose these restrictions, uh, if you impose those conditions, the facility will comply with the restrictions and no one can complain about it. It'll cost them more money, but that's kind of the form of restrictions. The higher the property value in Nuaces Park, the lower the tax rate for the whole city. So, if you're so compelled, I ask you to impose those restrictions. If you're gonna issue a standard use permit, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, please come forward and state your name and your, give us your residence address, please.
My name is Arda Hayes. Uh, I live at 150 South Nuaces Park Lane, and I'm in opposition to the proposed building. Um, right now, when I open, uh, my patio doors and I, I look toward my backyard, I see a huge, uh, steel or aluminum building right now. And, uh, I don't want that anymore to propagate in the neighborhood. Uh, it's, uh, very unappealing, for one thing. I believe it'll, uh, lower the property values for another. So, uh, again, I'm in total opposition, and this is not the coming of the neighborhood.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak for or against the S U P? Please come forward and state your name and your residence address.
My name is Kim Wagman. I live at 149 South Nuaces Park Lane. I've lived there since 1996, and I just want to say that over the years, yes, there have been some violations here or there of deed restrictions, but on the most part, if not all, have been able to be remedied. Like boats can be moved, trailers can be moved. This structure is gonna be a permanent structure forever, and it's gonna be a eyesore forever for all the neighbors. Even the neighbors who don't live in the, the radius that was outlined on the map, the people who walk streets and, um, exercise on the roads, they're gonna be seeing it. So, it's not just the group that's included in this petition. It's, um, all the neighbors, North Nuaces, South Nuaces, and I just want, I oppose the building of this structure.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak for or against this special use permit? Please come forward, state your name, and give us your residence address.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Muffner. I live directly across the street from Ms. Sepulvedas at 147 Sa- uh, South Nuaces Park. Um, I am opposed to the building of this barn. Um, and first of all, I want to let you guys know, nobody in, that has come here tonight is, um, wanting to do it for confrontation purposes. We want to keep a happy neighborhood. We just want to preserve what we have invested a lot of money in. And so, I'd like to know, from the panel that approved it, how we could have so many signatures and how many people have been directly affected by this and have already said they do not approve it, how it was still approved? And, um, so, we do not approve of it. Yes, I will tell you. We have a trailer at our, a camper at our house. Um, it's movable, and if we need to move it, we will. We have had it moved up until, um, the flood of, uh, a year and a half ago, and we've had to use our camper a couple of times for the, the freeze and another hurricane. So, it has been, been used as a secondary place to live on a couple of occasions. Um, but nobody is here for confrontation. We just want to preserve that which we have put a lot of money into. Your home is your primary investment, and we do not have a couple of homes like the Sepulvedas do. And so, this is our primary residence, and we just want to preserve it.
Thank you. Anyone else speak for or against special use permit? All right, I'll close the public hearing and go to item D, which is a consideration, possible action for proven ordinance in first reading for special use permit to allow a storage building greater than 144 square feet in a residential single-family R1 district located in 146. City South Nuaces Park Lane, bearing a legal description of lot 16, block 1, Nuaces Park subdivision. And ask the city attorney general, Captain, please.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a special use permit, a special use permit to allow a storage building greater than 144 square feet in a residential, single-family district located at 146 South Nuaces Park Lane, bearing a legal description of lot 16, block 1, Nuaces Park subdivision, and dealing with related matters.
I'd like to motion for an approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed.
Supposed.
Or this is passed on the first reading.
This, uh, this one requires a supermajority vote, so.
This one.
We need a.
Yeah, it requires 75% of the city commission. That's four and a half, so it would require five votes.
Let's go to the night here.
I'm sorry?
I thought it was four votes.
It's four votes.
I'm tired. If a proposed change is protested, three-fourths of all members of the governing body, and three-fourths of six is four and a half.
No. It's five. Only have five.
But he's a member of the governing body.
But he's not, he's not a governing body.
It's always been a 4 to 1.
The supermajority is always. The supermajority's always, always been four votes.
It's always been four.
He only breaks a tie.
Well, she's, she's reading.
He's a member of the governing body.
Yeah, but he's not a voting.
We've voted on stuff before, the supermajority's been voted on. And it passes. Okay, well, the votes are recorded and you've heard the advice of your attorney. So go on, I guess the next item, which is a discussion. Actually, if we, there's no objection, I'd like to skip around a little bit. Go to item 28, which is a discussion of possible action regarding the city manager's contract. 28. This is based on the agenda package, which is, it's not 28, it's...
It's two more pages, three, four pages.
Yeah, it's a title?
Yeah, it's a title.
I think something was placed on, there's a title.
Yeah, they're different.
Motion to go into executive session?
Yes.
You realize that we knew that, there's all these people that are waiting here for all the others. So we're going to keep it longer.
Yeah, there's seven, it's 28.
Yeah, there's two 28s.
There's multiple pages.
We have two pages numbered five.
Yeah, I think, I think it's the one where that's number 28.
Okay. Should I take it the other way around?
All right, anyway, you want, you asked to go into executive session.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a question to go into executive session.
Second.
28 under, actually, I don't, I don't, 30B and C, Attorney Counsel's petition for simple section 5.1. After, rather, C, 551.0712, to receive legal advice in the Council of Representatives of the City of Tuxedo, as related to contract new issue. Again, I'm sorry, it's D, and E. 551.074, deliberate, but, on the duty of the new decisions of the city manager, and to seek legal advice under E. Okay, so all those in favor going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're at consult with our attorneys for a little while. We'll come back and pursue and complete the other items on the agenda. Okay, we're out, we are out of executive session on items 30D and 746. And we're going to go back to item 28, which is a discussion of possible action regarding city manager's contract.
Who's to table the item?
Put on the table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If both like signing motion carries, item 28 to table. Unless there's any objection, let's go to the, all items.
How many can?
Item 16.
Oh.
I have the item 16 on this agenda, this discussion of possible action on reopening holes 19 through 27 of the Tony Butler Golf Course. And then item was requested by Commissioner Perez, which is possible.
And so I just wanted to make a motion to reopen holes 19 through 27 on the Tony Butler Golf Course. That's a motion.
Is that before public comment or no public comment? Are we going to have a comment?
There's a motion.
We're going to, we're going to have to ask for public comment or 37 people who submitted written comments for this. I'm going to have to, Amanda's going to have to read all of them. So we have a, on the table.
We have the motion, there's a motion.
We have a motion, was there a second?
Well, if, I have a question. So if we don't motion, does it, it dies and we can't bring it up again, or what happens?
Well, you can bring it up again at a future meeting, but not, not at this meeting, but...
Oh, then, I second the motion.
All right, well, I guess we should ask for public to go ahead and have a public comment.
I know that there's some people near there that would like to speak on that item. But if you like, I can, I can meet the...
Let's go ahead and read the written, let's go ahead and take the written comments.
I have Robert Menfrenini. Excuse me if I didn't pronounce the name correctly, but it's 1325 Dixieland Road. And it reads like this. "We have been, we have been coming to Harlingen for over 18 years and supporting Tony Butler all those years. But we are set to see part nine, nine closed. When it was open, it had a full schedule of young golfers, high school golfers, and a lot of older golfers that love the park. Nine for walking unable to play at a slower pace. Now that COVID is getting under control, our Winter Texans will be returning. Plus, our Canadian friends will also be back. Tony Butler will not have the capacity for all the new young golfers plus the returning yearly golfers. Please consider to open Tony Butler to its original 27 holes design. I am sorry that I cannot attend the upcoming meeting. Thank you in advance." The next one is Ken Campcrack. Address 2801 is Harrison. "The City of Harlingen must be serve the holes 1927. I am a proud Winter Texan. So many of us really enjoy that course. It is a, it is a course that is compact and easy to walk with a pool cart. I cannot believe the City of Harlingen is willing to give up the revenues for that course. It was a poor decision and should be reversed." The next one is Eric and Irene Erksen. And it reads like this. "Holes 1927 were our favorite place to golf. Easy walking, of course. Unable to do the same on 18, 1 through 18. Very close to Paradise Park where we winter golfed there at least twice a week. Although the league has moved, we would return a golf at our leisure. Please reopen this beautiful course." Jerry Weatherby, 1905 West Wisconsin Avenue. "I support the reopening of holes 1927 at Tony Butler Golf Course. It is a, it is a real asset to the community as it expands the course and is very favorable to new and young golfers. Golf grew rapidly during the COVID-19 pandemic. And with new golfers and the return of Canadian Winter Texans, Butler will be very busy. The staff has done a great job with 1 through 18. And word of mouth is making Butler a sought after place to play." Okay, the next one is Claude Hadley, 1237 Sherwood Trail. "Sir, I'm a Winter Texan who lives in Scenario, Ontario, Ontario, and spent five months at Yano Treasure Park. I play golf at least five days a week at courses in the valley. I play Tony Butler at least once a week at a bare minimum. It would be a shame to close holes 19 to 27 because that nine hole is the most fun to play as the yardage is not as long. And that is just great for us seniors that only play nine holes and still like to walk as the holes, the holes 19 to 27 are an easy walk for us seniors. And it needs holes 1 through 18 for people that want to play 18 holes without having to put up with us that only want to play nine holes. Please, please keep holes 19 through 27 so us older seniors have a place to play and are away from those golfers that want to play 18 holes. Thanks for letting me have my input. I hope holes 19 through 27 are still playable and open when I arrive in the valley in November." Next one is Charles Hovelson. Address 3401 West Business 83, Lot 108. "As residents of Harlingen, we want this important walking recreation opportunity to be open and at least brought back to a playable condition. Closing it was wrong for many recorded reasons. It provides revenue to TB and former rounds cards inside sales. And it is the definition of parking recreation and is an incredible drawing marketing card for Harlingen for a rumor retiring population. Palm Gardens Group would commit to supporting by spending tee times twice weekly for their league. Excited to see this move forward." The next one is William Gooder, 3401 Business 83, Harlingen, Texas. "I live, I live in Palm Gardens and we used to play that at least once a week and enjoy it very much. Would love to see it reopened so we could do it again." Gary Scott, 14 Seelocks Road, San Benito, Texas. "I would ask you to please reconsider and open holes 19 through 27. As a Winter Texan and senior, I have enjoyed playing this course every week for the last 10 years. I enjoy walking and find this course very suitable for seniors. Other courses are not too long. The nine-hole course at Tony Butler suits many of us from our park at Fun and Sun who have supported this course for many years and would continue to support it in the future if you decide to reopen 19 through 27. Thank you for meeting." Leonora Holmes.
Hey, Leonora, Leonora's here. Leonora, do you want to speak or do you want her to read your statement?
Just one second. Leonora Holmes, 4137 North Minnesota Street. I second that motion. It's like, everything is there. On the other hand, I also want to speak very clearly about the high schools that take advantage. We've had the police explorers there taking some golf lessons. And we just really enjoy having the history of a player who played that hole course with a number four. Would, and so, you know, there's a whole lot of tradition and history plus the youngsters and those oldsters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ricky here, 3110 North Peach Hollow Circle. "I would like to comment on my opinion in reference to Tony Butler issue. I lived in the valley for 20 years and played Tony Butler often, once or twice a week. My experience has been that golf, especially the nine, the small nine-hole facility like Tony, Tony's 19 through 27, is a wonderful place for youngsters to learn the game. Not only the game of golf, but also the game of life. The importance of dedication and honesty. It would be a travesty to lose this facility and I, I think, I, important, importance it is to future leaders." The next one is Lance Burksell, 1900 Bryce Avenue. "As a Winter Texan, one of the reasons I bought a home was because of Tony Butler Golf Course. I enjoy very much walking holes 19 through 27. Now with those closed, I have had to go to the other cities to try and find courts to play. And our park has taken their lease to other courts. And the city has lost money on this hole, closed. Closed, it needs to reopen so the city can gain this money back." Mike Hendricks, 18 East Bowie. "I would like to go on record in support of the reopening of the holes 19 through 27 at Tony Butler Golf Course. With proper management and delegation, I am of the opinion that entire 27 holes at Tony Butler would be profitable and would be a great addition to the city's offering of sports venues. Golf course is a natural, social distancing venue for anyone who enjoys the outdoors and getting some exercise. Please consider the recommendation to reopen holes 19 through 27. This is a win-win situation for all of us." Betty Clark, 25370 Palm Oxtas Palmas. "Our Monday ladies golf group had played nine holes on this Tony Butler, nine for many years, and enjoy the fun and social time. Without this facility, the group lost its momentum. Bring back Tony Butler 19 through 27 and give our group its drive to start up again." Patrick Weaver, Germantown, Tennessee. "Truly an important property as it provides a unique venue for both beginners and Winter Texans. In combination with holes 1 through 18, the Tony Butler Golf Course facility becomes both exceptional and desirable among RGB public golf facilities. Additionally, you have a genuine professional at TBGC. Give him free rein and let him run with all facilities. Additionally, you have a genuine professional." The next one is Doug Beard, Wesleyville, Texas. "I believe closure of 19 through 27 took away a reason to visit your town. My wife and I played that site at least once a week, playing 18 holes. While we were in town, we were also shopping. We would also shop, ate lunch, and other money-spending activities, supporting your local businesses. We also purchased a new car in Harlingen. Closure of 19 through 27 has removed one of the incentives to come to your town and spend my money there. I am a Winter Texan and spent my money year-round in the valley, golfing three to five times a week. I would like very much to see 19 through 27 reopen. I believe it will again bring dollars to the community from all over the valley. Thank you for your presentation." Catherine Menzner, 3976 International South Lake area. "Expressing support for the reopening of holes 19 through 27 at Tony Butler. This is such an important course for seniors, beginners, and Winter Texans. It is needed for those not people who are playing the big horse at Butler. I hope you all recognize the importance of this nine hole." Steven Cherry, 5714, Wow, from Seaman, Harlingen. "I would like to state my support for item 16 on the July 21, 21, 2021 agenda involving reopening holes 19 through 27 of the Tony Butler Golf Course. Reopening the course would help increase business, help with jobs, and improve letting..." Lucas, 145, 14558 Square Drive. "I would love to have the 19 through 27 reopened. When you closed it, people stopped playing ball because holes 1 through 18 are for the good of golfers and don't want us to hold them up. I used to go every Sunday and play 19 through 27. And now I don't go because I cannot compete with a good golfer. I am a Winter Texan and would love to see this site 19 through 27 reopened." Jim Phillips, Fit Tree Resort. "Into Harlingen many years ago, when my parents stayed there, played those holes, enjoyed them. Now I come down through the winter. Fit Tree used to have a standing tee time every Monday from 12 to 20 players. Now we go to a smaller, to a smaller, less popular course. Open the course back, have people who play money will be ready." Paul LaBurge. Paul LaBerge, Bristol, New Hampshire. These nine holes of golf at Tony Butler are just right for a walking round of golf. Well kept when open and we never had to contend with crowds. It was an ideal for friends visiting could enjoy a nice round of golf. Please, at least keep open. Thank you and my guests from New Hampshire. Ruth Swain. La Vista, Launa Vista, Texas. Reopening the additional nine holes at Tony Butler will enhance the golfing experience for the entire community. The nine holes, like any other public amenity, are indeed a city asset which adds to the quality of life for all citizens and visitors. I would encourage a positive consideration of this agenda, item fifteen. John Slicer, ninety-three thirty-three Southeast Side, Exol Drive. I believe the opening of holes nineteen through twenty-seven would be very beneficial to the local economy and golf community. It would allow for more league play to go and attract golfers from the surrounding areas to play at the twenty-seven hole facility. Since golf has become more popular during the recent years of COVID, it would enable people to get to play a more unique round without having to leave the city. Doug Hartwell, thousand-one Golf Course Drive. We think the additional nine holes provide recreational options for seniors and beginning golfers. When these holes were open, we frequently used our pool carts because it is a much easier walk. We usually saw other seniors and fathers with their, with young children enjoying the course. We strongly encourage community decision makers to return these holes to the facility. JB Freeman, twenty-eight thirteen Olive Wood Drive. The Executive Nine, the back, the back back nine. There are a few more names to describe the perfect nine holes for golfers. As a kid learning how to hit a golf wall, this was the best nine to go play and learn the game without disturbing the peace of play, a play for more experienced golfers. Sometimes we play golf nineteen through twenty-seven twice and sometimes we play holes one through eighteen, but needed a little bit more golf, so we jump on this hole and keep the fun going. I think that it's, it is extremely important for Tony Butler to have this hole stay. Kids, winter tourists and golfers of all levels have been able to enjoy them for years. Now that I have two little boys of my own, I am looking forward to taking them there to have them learn the game on the same hole I did. Robert Barrera, sixteen oh three Vicki, Florville, Texas. The nineteen holes, nineteen through twenty-seven holes are part of our history. As a Valley native, these holes are special to all of us as golf legends, legends. Like Lee Trevino and then Hope then have played these holes. I support the reopening of these holes as many golfers, both young and old, need a place where they can go, play golf, play nine golf, nine holes with, without having to worry about getting in the way of other golfers or having to wait for a tee time. It also allows a youth to have a place to pick up the game without having to compete to get a tee time on the main eighteen. I often see our youth play nineteen through twenty-seven and it always brings a smile. Having a separate nine hole course is a real advantage. It is something I do not, I do not have access to where I live. I always enjoy and looking forward to playing when I visit family. Getting to play nineteen through twenty-seven is always a pleasure and one that I take advantage of when time is short. Ellen Resmussen, can't pronounce that one. Forty-four oh nine Parkland, Harlingen, Texas. Walking the holes nineteen through twenty-seven twenty-five times a month was most effective exercise. Since the flat nine was taken away, I had to ride as shown by my scalp. Formerly a winter Texan and now a resident. The winter Texan at Tony Butler drew me to become a Harlingen resident. The midst of locals and others at Tony Lee is my cup of tea. I am not a country guy. Sylvester Trevino Jr.
Mr. Trevino spoke. He spoke in person.
Pat, sixteen, sixty-seven, eight-twenty Willis Road. I am writing the hopes that nineteen through twenty-seven holes are seriously being considered for reopening. Can't express enough how we enjoy those holes being winter Texans and natural golfers. It is a night, it is nice to walk them holes as we don't hold out the good golfers, which is so frustrating to them. If you're a golfer, you really understand this. You would probably be delighted to see how those nine holes would bring lots of revenues on the course, course as well as in the clubhouse for drinks and snacks. Wouldn't hurt to try, wouldn't hurt to try with them reopen as there was so much interest before and may, and maybe even more now that golf is getting more popular. Frank Vandergrin, two-sixty-five Jamaica Street, Pacific. Holes nineteen through twenty-seven gave beginner golfers and not so great golfers a chance to golf, learn the game and not even be the whole golfers on the regular one through eighteen holes. Our park holds two tournaments using holes nineteen through twenty-seven and bring out eighty to a hundred golfers each time. Many seniors prefer to walk a course to get some exercise and nineteen through twenty-seven provides this opportunity. Many golfers, many other golf courses are too long to walk. It would be a shame to lose this valuable sports opportunity and space to another mall or parking lot. Once gone, it can never be replaced. Dennis Marcaccio, sixty-six oh five East one-seventy-five Monticello, San Benito, Texas. I think nineteen through twenty-seven was more of an asset to golf course than you might have imagined. You have lost almost all of the winter Texas golf leagues to other courses. Approximately four years ago, I spoke with the head of the league for Fun and Sun after three consecutive rain out Wednesdays and I asked him how much Tony lost. His reply was fourteen hundred dollars each Wednesday. You have, you have lost several parks. This would relieve some of the other proudness on the other eighteen. I know of people who won't play the eighteen because of, because of beginners or the older players holding up play. I believe money is the drawback for not opening nineteen through twenty-seven. Back up. Use your imagination to create ways to save expenses, such as a part-time home, who, who have no benefits. Three years ago, I played fifty-two different courses across the U.S. and Tony was in the top five as far as the busiest. Please do the community a favor and reconsider it. Thank you. Joe Whitaker, seventeen thirty-three Upper Court, Harlingen. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment on this matter. I'm a longtime Harlingen resident, resident and have been playing golf at the Tony Butler Golf Course over forty years. I strongly support the reopening of the holes nineteen through twenty-seven holes known as the executive course. I appreciate the city's effort to bring financial stability to Tony Butler by selling the executive course property and using those funds to improve the holes one through eighteen. But apparently that plan cannot be advanced because of deep restrictions. I am sure the benefits of the executive course have been given substance by previous mentors such as, such as it being kid, kid and family and beginners friends because of its relatively shorty and is also popular with older golfers who would like to walk the course. I know that maintenance costs in getting the financial balance sheet of Tony Butler out of the red was a main goal. But if the sale of the executive course property is no longer an option, I am of the opinion that it, that it makes no financial sense to let it, to let it lay dormant. The executive course was immensely popular with the winner Texans and a major income generator during the winter seasons. Closing the executive course would be like a sales manager firing one of his or her best earners. Putting the money matters aside, it would be sad to lose such iconic piece of Harlingen golf history. Thank you again for indulging me in my comments and giving me, giving them consideration. Sandra Louise. While I'm not a golfer, my sons learned to golf at Tony Butler. The opportunity was invaluable to them. This golf course has served this area for many years. Imagine the opportunity for generations to come. If the course is closed, it will be a lost to the real brand development. Senior, I'm working. More mayor.
You need some water. Do you want to take a break?
No, no, no. I'm gonna get it done. I just want to get it done. Michael Guerri, more holes to pay more revenues for the city. This is a good one. John Hen, one thousand one Golf Course Drive, one, two, three. The current neglect of this part of the golf course creates an eyesore and gives a bad impression of Harlingen for visitors. We have hundreds of young people who learn their golf on this shorter course and it is a healthy one and a half mile walk for us seniors. Seniors, consider using a hiking slash bikes as well. Please reopen. Allow management to create incentives to play, eat and drink there. Also, please control the water. It kills fish food and, it kills fish food and fish and keep the birds away. It is a predator. Let's show some pride of place to reopen. Richard Parish. Nineteen forty, West Iowa Avenue, Harlingen. Golf is growing nationally at a tremendous rate and I feel that it's time to reopen holes nineteen through twenty-seven before it deteriorates even more than it has. There are several winter Texans who play their leagues and on that nine hole course, it was a draw to bring some to the Valley. Before I became a permanent resident, I was a winter Texan for ten years and golf was a top priority to choose Harlingen to reside. Charlie Sessel.
Faisal.
Faisal. Thank you, Mayor. Fourteen, fifteen fourteen East Austin. I am out of town and cannot attend the meeting. Please reopen the holes five holes at Tony Butler. My wife and I really enjoy playing the executive nine. Thanks for your consideration. Jerry Tenby, fifty-six eighteen La Estrella Circle. Commissioners, please open holes nine through twenty-seven at Tony Butler. I have played there for the past twenty-five years and enjoy the side of the course. Easy walk and no one pushing you. In the past, I've seen many of our students using the side of the course. Now they are walking the front side, which slows, slows play for players riding in the course. Winter Texans will return soon and I know they love those holes on Park Lane. Please do not turn it into another parking lot. Thank you. That's it, ma'am.
Okay, sure, sure. Let's give Amanda a hand for that. Thank you. And all golf courses. Okay, very good. All right, so there's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to, I don't know how to amend this, but can we go ahead and, and motion to open it November first? So that way we give staff time to prepare the courses and get ready to, to open them.
I thought they wanted October first.
I don't think that'll be enough time.
Yeah, so, so according to the golf director, we needed ninety days.
Yeah, and I think because of all the rains that we've had, they're gonna.
Yeah, so winter, the winter Texas do start coming in.
But we still have to get the course ready, sir. The greens and the irrigation, we got to get this prepared. So the golf director asked for ninety days. So that gives us about three months, three and a half months to get it ready for November first. If we get it ready sooner, I all mean go open sooner.
But, but.
We have an amendment.
General fine.
Okay, we'll just say that you want to amend your motion, want to amend your motion.
To go ahead and open the course, the set holes for.
All right, you made the second, you accept the amendment.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. What's it going to cost the city to do this minimally, moderately, or improve it to the max?
So we have some just estimates, Commissioner, but it's going to cost a one time, a cost of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars and a recurring cost of a hundred-and-seventy-four. So the initial startup is three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, but the recurring is about a hundred-and-seventy-four. That's an approximate dollar amount. Now, if we were to do repairs to the irrigation, just like we're doing to the eighteen, we're estimating about one-point-three million dollars.
Okay.
And that's, again, that's an estimate. We don't have, we have not had an architect look at it.
Okay, so, so you're saying this could cost up to one-point-three million?
But again, there's ways to cut that. If we go to part-time, if we cut back instead of getting, I believe, the, I think the budget called for, I think, what, twenty, ten, ten carts or twenty carts?
It calls for ten.
Ten carts. So if we get ten carts, that would cut off the cost. If we get part-time employees, that would also cut off the cost because we would have to be paying for the, the benefits package and that. So that would lower the costs significantly as well.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, it's twenty carts, twenty.
Twenty carts. So we, we lowered it down because in reality, I believe, we're already, in reality, we're only opening up, what, holes from nineteen to twenty-four, really? Because some of them are already open, correct?
And a lot of folks walk that area. So, so, you know, if we cut that down to ten carts instead of twenty, well, that's fifty thousand dollars less.
Yeah, so there are ways, like, I know you're trying to do like a doomsday scenario, but there are ways to cut it and that's what I was hoping to go over on the budget because I know we're going to also be having a meeting with the four B board. That's more, there's still Tony Butler Golf Course, but that number is giving you, there is ways to cut it. And that's something that I know I've discussed with Dan, where we will get some four employees, part-time instead of regular, that would significantly cut the cost because we don't have to pay for the benefits package.
So what we will do is we'll incorporate some of these costs into the budget workshop for the thirtieth.
So right now, all we're doing is basically just saying, okay, we want to open it and they were going to figure out all the.
Okay, so I have a question.
Yes.
Because the last budget workshop that we had, the deficit we were facing was a little over three million dollars. And add this million dollars, it's going to be a little over four million dollars. My concern is, is, you know, how are we going to pay for that? What are we going to take out of that budget?
So, so that's why I was hoping to find some of your answers in the next, at least one more workshop, correct?
So, next Friday.
Do you not feel more comfortable owning it? Once you've had the answers of where we're going to get the money from? I understand the four B is an option, right? And I understand that there are other options. But until I see where the money is exactly going to come from, I don't feel comfortable knowing because I don't know what we're going to have to take out.
Because right now, I think when I was speaking to Dan, I think we were talking about close soon. But what I want to do is I want to give the.
I understand it. I, I, I get that. But we don't have a definite answer on where the money is going to come from.
And we won't have it until after we work it out in the workshops. So that's what we're looking for.
So, so can we not table that until we, we go through those workshops and get that answer? And find, I agree, find the most economical way to get that accomplished. But, but I definitely don't want to commit to something that we're going to pull from some other department.
But we're not opening it today. We're just, we're waiting till November. So I'm sure we'll be able to find what were, their answers between now and November.
But this is, if we make, like, immediately you start it, it doesn't change the. But this is, if we make, like, immediately you start it, it doesn't change the, we're almost at the same, you're saying open in November, I'm saying, well, we wait until we get the budget workshop, and then maybe we can open it sooner once we get everything answered.
But the motion was to open it, open those holes in November. So that's, I'm not saying open it today, I'm saying, let's open it, the holes.
But you're gonna have to start putting money into the meeting to start.
Well, that's why I want to go ahead, because if we wait till November and figure out where the money's coming from, then we're gonna stall another six months.
I'm sorry? The cost?
So, but once they reopen.
$38,000.
300, it's 384, this is estimates, these are estimates. 384 startup and a 174 recurring.
That's assuming.
About 1.3 million.
No, because.
That's a million dollars, a million dollars in sprinklers.
That's assuming they're not, that's assuming they're.
You were asking about the sprinklers, right, for the back nine? When we talked to Jeff, he basically said that because each one would be like about six or seven grand, he said that he would need more or less about, I want to say the number was like $38,000, was it? Something like that for the sprinklers? That's what it was. The 1.2 million that he's talking about.
When is our next budget workshop? We were supposed to have.
Next Friday, or the 30th.
Yeah, and I'll leave it after that meeting.
We have a motion, we have a motion in the second.
We have a motion, a second, but we don't, we don't have, we're not finished with discussion.
So I, so we have 1.3 million, and we could draw the city finances down, but where's the money gonna come from? I know irrigation is a very important issue. Drainage of floodwaters is a very important issue. And if we take a million, a million and three or $800,000 out, that's less money available to, for drainage.
Actually, hoping that the golf course.
Because we only have one, one pot of money. And if you take it for this and if you take it for that, now, I'm very sympathetic and I would love those last nine holes to be open. I think it's just magnificent. But where's the money gonna come from? And as Arive said, where are we taking it from? And so we have to ask the question, is irrigation more important? I keep saying irrigation, but drainage? Are roads more important?
We just realized.
Or is the golf course?
Actually, with the golf course actually improves the drainage. When we go into the ponds and stuff and dredge it, it actually improves the drainage. So the golf course is actually a necessity for drainage as well.
Okay. Amanda, you had one more?
Yes, Mayor, it's Juan Garcia, 5718 West.
Your Honor, I also.
Hello, thank you. Thank you. Actually, it's a good segue because I didn't want to take it for granted that we're gonna vote to reopen the golf course. I wanted to give, thank you all, Mayor and City Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak today. I wanted to give a different perspective. In my water resources class at Texas A&amp;M University in College Station. Woo! We were taught and encouraged to, in our designs for infrastructure within our communities, to be very innovative. And the reopening of 19 through 27 holes at Tony Butler right now is an opportunity. It's an opportunity to be innovative as civil engineers with our civil engineering infrastructure. The ponds, as Commissioner Perez just said right now, are completely silted up. So if we dredge the ponds, we create more capacity, Commissioner Mesmer, for the, for our stormwater to go into. Not only that, but now we can reuse this stormwater in our ponds to water the greens and the fairways, and we can, we can be a leader in that and then open that back up, of course, to the revenue, right? All the revenues that we need for reopening and all the lost revenue that Mr. Elliott has been advocating for. So the alternative, or this idea, misguided idea of turning these holes into a Costco or to a retail or to a parking lot would damage and create worse flooding issues than what we already have. So I just wanted to go on the record and say that this is an opportunity to help improve the drainage situation in the city of Harlingen, and let's not pass it up. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Pizzano. You need to speak on all of your issues right now.
No.
Yeah, yes.
No, because that's not what the statute says, Your Honor, and you know that very well. And, and, wait, wait a minute, you prefer it tomorrow.
We don't have the other, we don't have any other items for you to speak on that for you, that you signed up for. You signed up for honesty and integrity, and I want you to speak on that as well as the golf course, okay? Because we don't have an item on honesty and integrity.
Well, the airport is very much something that is about.
Please, please don't use your time up.
I'm not, I'm ready to go. Honestly, the ponds are not totally silted up, and you all can go out there and take photos of it. But I think more cogently is the issue that a couple of y'all are seizing on to, as usual, a push-a-cake, delay and delay and delay. Dan has wavered all over the map on how many extra days. He wanted to say we could have a 90-day ready fund, then 110, 115, now we're higher than that. The money's already in the till. So if you jiggle here, the juggle's already got it, all right? The money's already there. We cannot continue to be liars all the time. And like I said, there's other items coming up. You know what the statute says, you're a lawyer, you should be a little bit more cogent yourself, Mayor.
Right.
I still got a minute left in other words.
Okay. That's all that, that's all that's on it. All right, two minutes. I want to get, actually.
I had signed up on that.
Very long agenda tonight. One minute, one minute.
And I understand your question of where the money's coming from.
Please state your name and your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Rick Salinas, I am the mayor from the city of Lifer. And I am in support of opening the holes 9 through 27, as it's known to me, Executive 9. And I have things that I could speak on, but the reason I wanted to speak to his question was because that is important. Where is the money coming from? But the question is, that I think hasn't been asked, is do these, all these things need to be done at one time in order to open up the holes? And I think it's a question that needs to be asked. What is it that we need to do immediately for us to open it up? And then what are we gonna do second? And have a timeline as to when these things need to be done? And then you can appropriate whatever funds you need, see where you're getting that money. But I think that question needs to be asked and answered from those that have that.
All right, thank you.
I wanted to go and mention, because there, this is the information that they gave us at the workshop. So remember, we're in reality, we're only opening up holes 19 to 23. And in this that they gave us, the sprinkler repair cements are 11,000, the repair greens are 23, the aerating, the fairways is 504 bucks, and then the fertilizer and T-box in there are 1,200 bucks. So total cost of $36,882.50. So it's not the 1.2 million, you're throwing out numbers just to scare people about the numbers. This is what Frank is talking about, what I'm talking about, is that we want to open up the Executive 9 to open it up so people, so they can be ready for the winter Texans, so that way we can get some revenue. So that way we can see if this can actually be self-sustaining. Because I, I'm worried about it too. I'm worried about how are we gonna sustain this because I don't want to be having to pay $500,000 every year supporting the golf course. But this is, this is what we're coming up to try to give them an option so we can see whether it's gonna work or not. And the cost of this is only $36,882, this is what they gave us. So this is not the 1.2 million and all the other numbers are thrown out. We're talking about opening it for 90 days.
I didn't toss his number out. I asked how much it cost and.
But I'm being, okay, what I'm doing is I'm being specific on what we need. To open up the nine holes or from holes 19 to 23, according to staff, to, right here, it says, "This plan of action is based on a 90-day cycle to bring holes 19 to 23 back to playable condition." Okay? "Without addressing poor condition of irrigation to some drinks." True. But right now, we're trying to get it open to see if it's gonna be viable. So 19 to 23, $36,000, that's what it's gonna cost.
So let me ask a question.
Okay.
So we do open it up, right? Then we do, the best way possible, every moment it takes to get it there, as soon as possible, get it open. And at the end of this fiscal year coming up, come this time next year, if the golf course has added to that loss of revenue, right? There's all, they're all assumptions. But if we get to, like you talked about, $500,000, $600,000, $700,000 loss, will you be prepared to shut it right now?
Yes. Yes, because if I, I support opening the golf course, and I think it's a great thing to have, but if we're, we as a city cannot afford to be paying $500,000, $700,000 a year to support the golf course. I, I don't believe that, I don't. But what I want to do is I want to give the golfing community a chance to show what they can do. I've heard a lot of stories from different golfers, how, you know, it's a great thing. And I'm a teacher at South. I see my students there, that they play golf, and, you know, they wanted that, they want that availability as well, and I see that. So all I want is an opportunity to give them a chance, give them a shot to see what they can do. But it becomes this next year, and it's like a huge, huge, you know, like dent in our, in our things. And I agree with Mike. Do I believe that drainage, even though I know it helps, do I think overall drainage is more important? Or maybe the fire department or the police department? Yes, I do think the fire department, police department are more important than Tony Butler Golf Course, but my point is, I want to give it a shot.
Okay, we appreciate that. I do want to just sort of remind everybody kind of how we got here. We did engage a consultant to do a study, they performed the, this is National Golf Institute, performed the study on our, on our golf course. They came back basically with a $7 million price tag on transformative restoration of the golf course, things that needed to be replaced out there. That was just the 18 holes. That didn't, they didn't even address the nine holes. So the commission, back then, a couple of years ago, made the decision that, sort of, I think a compromise was the order that was. The other thing was, is annually, we were losing about $500,000 a year. So the data is there that with the nine-hole course open, we were losing $500,000 a year. We have that historical, objective, you know, numbers on what the losses were. So the commission arrived at what essentially was a compromise. No, we're not gonna spend $7 million, but maybe we can, maybe we can find $2 or $3 million out of the 4B Corporation, which is the corporation that supports parks and sports venues and commitment centers and that's specifically established to address these things. And they had, and they appropriated 1.9 million. We're still short to do the 18 holes. The idea was to restore the 18 holes and reduce the operating cost down so that it wouldn't go to $500,000 a year. Because obviously, $500,000 a year can do, can buy a lot of police cars, can buy, can pay for collective bargaining increases, can hire, can hire additional officers, can do a lot of things, can do the fire department, they could pay for the streets, they could pay for drainage. And the golfing community, when, while we are certainly appreciative of the golfing community and all the, you know, we appreciate the winter Texans coming to the golf community, it's a relatively small population. Our other parks, anybody can go to our other parks. Anybody can, you know, any kid can sign up for soccer, but not everybody can buy a set of clubs, not everybody has the time to go play golf. So I thought that what the commission did a couple of years ago was a good compromise. And, and so I appreciate the fact that, that Commissioner, that you're, believe that these other things are priorities, and that if we restart this thing and it doesn't work, and we're still losing that kind of money, that we'll reconsider, we'll reconsider this. So with that, I'll just, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, the ayes have it, motion passes. Go to now to item 10. Actually, let me go to.
Can we go to 24?
Yeah.
Or not 24, the 25. Can we go to item number 25?
I'll be, we've got Mr. Isa Giddy here, and instead of letting him wait, let's go ahead, do we do the county tax office first and then go to 25?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Item 27 is the, is considerations, possible actions approved in interlocal agreement with Cameron County Tax Office for the City of Harlingen Property Tax Assessment and Collection. Robert?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. The city currently contracts Leinbarger, Gogan Blair, and Sampson for the collection of the ad valorem tax for their current and delinquent taxes. The current contract expires September 2023, and the contract may be terminated with 30-day notice. We have been presented with an opportunity for some cost savings on the, on the collection of the delinquent and current tax collections with an interlocal government agreement with the Cameron County Tax Office, which will include several services that they would provide the city.
Current taxes?
Current taxes, yeah. The percentage would be .367698, which equates to 2.63 per, per property parcel. We currently pay, I believe, 3.50. So on the bottom of the executive summary, you see the historical, between 2017 and 2021, the collections for those years, and then the associated fee from Leinbarger and what that percentage represents. And then on the fifth column, you see the Cameron County rate at their .36798 with that savings at the, at the far right. And we do have representatives in case of questions.
So I want to clarify a couple of things, Commissioners. The, the interlocal with Cameron County is for both current and delinquent taxes. We do have current agreements with Leinbarger for current and delinquent, they're separate agreements. So what we're proposing is the interlocal is go with the county for the current collections and continue on with the Leinbarger for the delinquent collections. And that's, that's what we're proposing.
So I have a question. So on the, on that, so what Cameron County is proposing is they want both?
No, they actually also use Leinbarger for their.
Oh, okay, okay, that's, that's one too.
So that's why I said, we have an agreement already, why not just keep our agreement in place?
And I have a question, the office that, that they currently utilize here in, in, I don't remember the address.
The Harlingen Tax Office is on the 77. So I think John is, is John here?
Yeah.
So John is here. So there's six employees at that office, so those are all Harlingen residents. And John would have to answer the question on what would happen to those employees. They are not city employees, those are Leinbarger employees, but John, do you want to address that question?
Good evening. I apologize for my dress. Usually I would wear a suit, but it was pouring rain in my house when I left and didn't have a chance to change, so I don't mean to be disrespectful. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to talk and thank you, Commissioner Pointe. We do have six employees there, they've done a fantastic job for you, over 30 years of collections. I have seen the proposal that the county's recommending, and it's a good proposal. I mean, as a, as a resident of Harlingen, I think you should seriously consider it. I have talked to Mr. Isa Giddy about the possibility of looking at those employees and to see if, if he can transfer any of them over. And so with that, that would, you know, he'd have to be able to address that, but we're looking at that, and, and we work very well together. I think he'll tell you this. Thank you.
Okay, so Robert, I have a couple of questions.
What will happen to, what happens with the other agent, the other taxing authorities or using the office?
Yes, what, what, the way this started is the city of Harlingen, 30 some odd years ago, before I was even with the firm, approached the firm to collect the current taxes. It's not what we do, we collect delinquent taxes, but we put together a proposal. The school district was involved, Los Fresno School District, Rio Grande School District, so those four entities made up, make up the Harlingen Tax Office. If one of them pulls apart, it's really hard to operate the tax office the way it's functioning right now. Six employees, the loss of revenue just from Harlingen would be substantial. I have advised the other entities that you all are considering this move, and so they will, they will be looking at what you do. If, you know, if you all decide to pull out, they probably will go with the county, but I can't speak for them. That's a possibility.
Okay. Okay, so Robert, give me some numbers, please, financially speaking. Would this save us money and how much in a fiscal year?
Yes, Sir, I'm here. If you look at the, the savings on the schedule, so like for 2021, that would have been like $44,000 in savings of what we would pay based on the contract amount.
Okay, so the amount is small, it's 44,000.
Right.
Okay, and, and then.
From 112, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry.
So, so the contract that we pay right now would be 100, is 112,000 compared to what we would have paid the county about 68, based on the percentage that we pay?
Okay, so the savings, we would, we still have to pay the county, but the savings would be 44,000 a year?
Right.
Okay, go.
Come in here.
Okay, we have, uh, citizen communication on that. Rob, Robert?
Robert Lethridge.
Yes, Rob, Robert Lethridge, 909 East Parkwood. Uh, need to talk about a couple of things. You're talking about savings, uh, I appreciate the last, uh, episode about where to get the money, uh, on the golf courts, and I'm not going to go into the golf courts because this is a Leinbarger and, and county tax collection thing. But, uh, I didn't hear that kind of concern for where we're going to get the money when y'all spent the $8 million for the Destination Park. And I think that, uh, people need to, they need to be able to vote for that. I think if you'd have the Tony Butler issue on the, on a ballot and the Destination Park on a ballot, I can guarantee you which one would have won and that money would have been there and you wouldn't be tak, taking it out of the general fund now. Now, let's go back to the tax office. First of all, I'd like to know what the, what the delinquency collection is going to be with the current city agreement and the difference is the, is the amount that Leinbarger gets the same whether you're under the county agreement or you're, whether you're under the City of Harlingen agreement. The other thing I want to know is, I want to point out is that it's not just the savings you're going to save, you also have more convenience. You've got more tax office, you've got a combined tax bill. I think that all of those things need to be thought of and if you can save any money, I think that's where you need to be doing it. We've heard all afternoon or evening about spend, not spending money and now there's a savings on the table, small or not, you guys are throwing it out like it's, like it's peanuts. And that's all I'm going to say.
All right, there's no other citizens, we can't sign up for that, so. Any other discussion?
I just want to say I think it's a good idea. Um, I spoke to, um, Tony and he had, not only would we have more locations, but they could even use a one-star national bank as well, um, to pay the taxes. So I think that's a good deal for the, we're saving money and I think it's more convenient for the people of Harlingen.
And if, excuse me, and if you take the last five years, we would have saved over 200 and 4,000.
If it was the same rate, yes.
It stays the same, okay? That's basically half of another truck to clean up the drainage. Okay? So 44,000 savings this year, accumulate that, we're looking at about 41,000 per year. It stays the same. So this, to me, is a no-brainer. And there's ways that we're going to find, to save some more money down the road and then we can buy several trucks to clean our drainage.
I make a motion to approve?
We had a motion. Do we have, did we have a motion?
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion, second.
Motion.
All right, so any other discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, black sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, uh, item, yes, yes, Mr. Isagiti, welcome.
Uh, thank you for, for, for your support on, on this endeavor. Uh, we've been, uh, uh, it's a long-awaited, uh, consolidation that, that we, that, uh, we had requested for many years, but, uh, I'm glad, uh, I'm glad this came through. And, uh, I just want to ask the mayor, if we can, uh, have the interlocal agreement, uh, ready to pick up tomorrow, sometime tomorrow, so we can put it on our, our agenda for the 27th, so we can, uh, I can introduce it to Commissioners Court, they can sign it, approve it, and that way we can start working on, uh, with the, with the, with your Tax Electives Office and start the process, not the collections, but the process.
Okay, well, I'm sure we can get that to you pretty, pretty quickly.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good shout out.
25.
Commissioner. Well, I know we're back to 10, but you wanted to pick another item?
Yes.
What was that? Which item was it?
Um, 25, the Airport Board. Amending the charter.
Okay, item 25, consideration possible action to approve an order, so first reading calling for special election held in the City of Harlingen on May 7th, 2022, on the question of amending its Home Rule Charter regarding the appointment of the Harlingen Airport Board for benefits, commission resolving other matters incident related to such election.
I signed up for the side of the law.
No, you didn't sign up for this.
Yes, I did.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did.
Oh, you didn't?
You can ask Amanda. I signed up for the matter, okay? Because I signed up for both meetings. I, I didn't know you were going to cancel both of, uh, one of the meetings, but I, but I did sign up for this. I told you a moment ago that I had a minute left on the airport and I wanted to discuss it right now, please. Is that okay?
Go, you have one minute.
Thank you, that's fine. Never has a motion been altered before it's even stated. Under Robert Rules of Order, which is Charter, essentially our Constitution commands you to follow. Never in over 54 years has a mayor prevented a motion from publication. This bullying tendency may I have, may have accrued in someone's upbringing, but it has no place in this auspicious setting. So, don't let yourselves be bullied. You've done at least two things tonight. Do what you've got to do. Thank you very much.
All right, um, somebody going to present this?
Um, do I, okay, I don't know, because I'm, you know, usually you guys read the-
Well, here's what happened. At the last meeting, um, we said we would come back with a couple of templates for Charter Amendment ordinances, this one being, uh, regarding the Home Rule Charter, uh, provision regarding the appointment of the Harlingen Airport Board, and there was interest expressed in amending the appointments to provide for city commission appointments as well as mayoral appointments. And so what we did, and in your packet, and if we need to put it up on the screen, we can, but we came back with a template which would amend the Charter, uh, an ordinance calling for an amendment to a Charter and, and also a special election on May 7th, 2022. And the key points here are under Section 1, Ownership and Operation. There are a couple of options here, uh, that, the language that is to be added or that would be added to the Charter is underlined. And the two options that are here is that either the existing members at the time of the change, if adopted, of course, would continue to serve out their term, and then each successor appointee would be made by each city commissioner, beginning with one, going to five, and then the mayor, and just continuing to rotate that way. Another option is that the existing members with one year or less remaining in their terms would finish out their term and then, uh, the remaining members would be replaced in the manner I described, starting with Commissioner, uh, with District 1, going through 5, and then the mayor. And so, uh, that's, that's kind of what we set up based on the last discussion and, and this is what we bring to you for discussion and consideration. Uh, it's by leave of the board.
One of the concern, one of the issues that I spotted in the ordinance is that we have not, the Charter calls for nine members of the, of the, of the Airport Board, this only provides for the appointment of six.
Yes, I, I, what I'm proposing, um, the change for the Charter to be, is I changed, I propose that we change, because I know the other, the other time we were here, you were speaking about compromise, that, this Airport Board was a compromise, and I agree, compromise is, is a good thing. So what I'm thinking, what I'm proposing for everyone, or hopefully you guys can agree, is that we change the Airport Board, instead of having nine members, we change it to seven members. Each member on the commission gets one member, as a compromise, you still, you'll, you'll still get more, you'll get two. So everybody, so there'll be a total of seven members, five from the city commission and two from the mayor. And I think that's a fair, um, um, compromise. Then the only thing is on these options, I would prefer, I would choose the, um, second option where it says only the existing members with one year or less remaining in the terms at the time of change shall continue to serve out. Because I know just like in the recent meeting, um, I know you, I think, I believe you appointed about a couple, uh, members and that means they will keep on serving and serving, and I, I think we should get our, our picks as soon as possible. So if they have a, uh, one year or less, then they can remain on their picks and then we'll go the order that, you know, one, two, three, four, five. Uh, but if they don't, then we would, once, if it passes, because remember, this is going to the people of Harlingen, they have to decide for themselves. But if the people, um, choose this, um, then we would choose our members, uh, our own picks and the commission would have a say in the Airport Board. So that's my, my, I, so again, my promotion is to move it to seven members. Each, each member of the city commission gets one appointment to the Airport Board and the mayor gets two.
All right, and, uh, what about the, what about the residency requirements? There's a split now.
We could do four, three?
Four can be, uh, outside of the City of Harlingen. Reason, the reason for that was to try to get other-
Yeah, no, no.
-community involvement, just the other valleywide support for the air, for the airport.
I agree with that. So we could do, I would say, since we have right now, I think it's five to four, then we would do four to three. Out of the seven, the majority will come from Harlingen and then we would have three in order to meet that criteria.
I would do five for Harlingen, too.
Okay, yeah, I'll work with you there, too. Go for it.
All right, um.
So I propose to amend-
Why don't you make the vote, why don't you make a motion?
Okay.
Uh, to the ordinance based upon what you're, well, I mean, you're going to have to read the cap, you're going to have to read the caption, but you'll have to clean this up at the second read.
Yeah, based on today's discussion and what the will of the commission is, we'll bring it back for a second reading and that's the operative reading, of course, where it's finally approved.
So go ahead and read the, so go ahead and read the caption, please.
An ordinance calling for a special election to be held in the City of Harlingen on May 7th, 2022, on the question of amending its Home Rule Charter regarding the appointment of the Harlingen Airport Board by the mayor and city commission, resolving other matters incident and related to such election and declaring an effective date.
Okay, I would, I would move to amend the Charter to, to reduce the number of, of Airport, uh, Board members to seven and that only the existing members with one year less remaining their terms at the time of the change shall continue to serve at their appointment term and that five of the Board members would be chosen from the city commission, two by the mayor, and a minimum of five would have to be residents of the City of Harlingen.
All right. Is there a second?
I second that motion. Don't ask me for a reason.
Is there any discussion? Oh. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Let's go ahead and take item 26, consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special election to be held at the City of Harlingen on May 7th, 2022, on the question of amending its Home Rule Charter, provide for term limits for the offices of mayor and city commissioners, resolving other matters incident and related to such election, declaring an effective date.
Okay, so mayor, commissioners, this is really the same thing. Um, at the last meeting, we were directed to come back with a, uh, some templates for possible ordinances regarding Charter amendments. This, of course, deals with term limits. Now, this one does have some options, um, on the second page, it's all underlined. What this, what this example does, and again, this is up for discussion, whatever you guys want to do, uh, it provides for a limit of three, three-year terms. There's also the option of kind of a cooling off period where an individual who has served three consecutive terms as commissioner or mayor may not hold again in the same office until at least one term out of office is passed. Some cities do that, some don't, it's up to you. And then finally, um, an individual who's served three terms as commissioner or a mayor can also run for the opposite office once those terms are completed. So, um, other than that, everything is largely the same. This is for your discussion and decision.
Okay. What were you doing for the comments right now?
We can do them now. I thought that we have, I thought that we have a couple signed up for this.
Yeah, we do, Mayor. We have David Garcia, can I have a turn minutes?
Mr. Garcia, if you're here, please come to the podium and state your name and your residence address. Okay.
I can read his comments, Mayor. I mean, he didn't ask to be called, so I, would you like for me to read his comments?
Oh, okay.
Okay. It says, "I strongly feel that, feel there should be term limits set rather than letting the same old people be there year after year." There is a reason, there, there, there is a reason, there are term limits for presidents of the United States. The City of Harlingen should be no different. It is a self-check to keep honesty and integrity and help prevent entry of dishonesty and stale conditions that can be found in long-term situations. I am in favor of maximum three consecutive terms. Thank you. And then we have another one, Mayor, Delia Cabasos-Gamas.
Okay, she's here, she's here. Cabasos-Gamas, if you would please state your name and your residence address.
Hi, my name is Delia Cabasos-Gamas, 1806 North Flamingo Lane. Mayor and commissioners, good evening. Um, the special election to place the term limits of the commissioners and the mayor to Harlingen constituents is imperative and crucial as this allows each one of your constituents to participate in our civil life. As our elected officials, which you make very, excuse me, as our elected officials, you make very important decisions on so many things that impact our family, our daily life, in our community, and as a voter, I thank you. This item has been discussed at these meetings among my friends, in the, in our neighborhood and in other places. I ask that you allow this special election take place, take place. Not doing so is silencing your voting constituents denied access to a ballot. I advocate always for doing your due diligence to everybody, including when all of you were actually elected. Um, so please allow that this be sent to all of your constituents to be placed on a ballot, ballot, so that we may be able to vote for it and not be just set on five commissioners and one mayor, to allow this to make it, to just be set on your own votes. Please allow this special election to take place next May. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, we have Mr. Robert Lethridge that would like to speak on this item.
Okay.
Robert Lethridge, 909 East Parkwood. I just think that, I just want to agree with the, the last speaker, that you have to have voter input here, and I'm a little disappointed in the last agenda item because there's a, there's a chronic, uh, mentality of not letting the voters decide on, on how things are running in Harlingen and more specifically with Commissioner Mesmer and, and, uh, Richard, Commissioner, for y'all to have a chronic history between the convention center, the, the $8 million Destination Park, the $20 million on the convention center, none of that has gone to the voters. And now, y'all don't even want the voters to decide if you want to change the Airport Board or, and hopefully you'll have a different, uh, change of heart with regards to term limits. This is something that the voters deserve, the right to choose. You want them to choose you, then let them choose if you want, if they want to impose term limits. I think that that's better for the community, there's, we have to have, uh, something in place, whether you for term limits or not, it's the matter of letting people vote. And I think that that's what this commission needs to do tonight and it, just like the, the previous agenda item, it needs to move forward. Thank you.
All right, please come to the podium and be rec, uh, state your name and your, your address, please.
Speaker, commissioners, uh, my name's Omar Verial, 2202 Seagull Lane. Uh, term limits are supported by a large majority of Americans. One only has to look at our neighboring cities for proof. When placed on the ballot box, it passes with overwhelming support. Americans understand that term limits counterbalance incumbent advantages, ensuring an influx of new ideas. We will have people coming in who understand the problems of today. Term limits also ensure one does not have a career in politics. You come in and do what you were elected to do. Before you were elected mayor and city commissioners, you were civilians who had ideas on how to make life better for Harlingen residents. Term limits remind you that you are one of us and you'll be returning to civilian life in a set amount of time. Thank you.
All right, um, no other comment?
I had, oh, you don't have a question?
So you have first?
Yes, um, you want to sit here, can I just walk, can I talk? I, like, can you hear me without me?
You can hear me.
Okay, good, because I have the teacher voice, I, I should be on yesterday.
Um, I did this because last time, I know last, officially, we had, um, commissioners who were interested in the organization.
Um, I did this because last time, I know last, officially, we had, um, commissioners who were interested in more education. Um, so I'm gonna have to do this right here. Um, I kind of like what, um, Mr. Matt said, is that being as the city commissioners, what we're supposed to do is we're supposed to come here, do the job, or, you know, do the job, and it's supposed to be a career. That's why I put that on there. It ain't doing the job, then pass the role over to someone else. It's public service, not a career. There are two types of term limits, and it's just information. There, uh, one of them is absolute term limits. That's the perfect example for that would be like President Madison. If you're in every mission of the President Madison, you serve a few terms, it's all lax and vague years. That's the point is second. They got an absolute limit, you can serve those eight years, and after those eight years, you're not serving again. Okay? Perfect example again would be like President Obama, he served for eight years, and he can run again. Consecutive term limits is something a little bit different. The second term limits for that is, is basically, you can use term limits, and there's, say, for example, uh, term limit of three years, that's the, uh, three, three years term, you serve ninety years. So you serve ninety years, but then there is like a cooling off period, where you'll be okay, you can run again for a sufficient, for a certain two terms. So you can sit down for six years, you got another six years, and then you can switch that. Sit down for six years, sit down for a little six years, and then you can run again. That's a consecutive term. So if you're not suited, and you cannot run again, consecutive work, it's limited how, how much time you serve consecutive. What I also wanted to do is I wanted to just like, straight out, and I also want to finish, guys, I'll, I'll get this to you. Okay, Bronson, just in this May 2021 election, um, the city of Bronson gave the people of Harlingen the opportunity to decide themselves. Remember, this is not a personal thing with your four-term limits, John. This is about giving the people Harlingen the choice. So the, the commission, the mayor of Bronson, they decided to give the people of Harlingen a choice, whose proposition wanted to, and on that, they proposed to place eight-year term limits on the mayor and city commissioners. This passed with 86% of the vote. So as you can see, this is not something that could be said all, it's not gonna be that popular, it's kind of delayed, but 86%, that's, that's overwhelmingly popular. Um, so their term limit is two, four-year terms for the mayor and commission. Okay, and this, this statute, that they'd like to withhold effect on the commission, their next, uh, commission's term, like, so the rest won't be exercised. In the county, same thing, they first, when we got, well, when I got elected, the county decided to give the people of Harlingen, this commission mayor decided to give people in the county the choice on a skin. Do you guys want terms, or do you not want terms? Anyway, they voted, they voted. Ninety percent of the vote went toward passing, uh, term limits to the county. Um, they agreed on three, four-year terms for the mayor and city commission. So that means, uh, if you're elected to the city commission in, um, the county, you can serve twelve years as a city commission. But then if you want to become mayor, or you want to run for mayor, hey, you've been elected, you can serve twelve years, um, as a city mayor. So it's a quarter of twelve years of public service to you. Okay? So many of you, maybe you might say, I don't know if that's ice and valley, but what about Texas? Okay, this is for the bigger cities in Texas. Does Houston have term limits? Yes. San Antonio? Yes. Dallas? Yes. Austin? Yes. Fort Worth doesn't. Okay, but as you can see, the majority of these cities, larger cities, and ones, and the two bigger ones here in the valley, have a minimum of people of Harlingen. That's what this is all about. Because I know some of you are, don't personally agree with term limits, and that's fine. If you don't agree with term limits, that's fine. You can do what every other resident of Harlingen would do on day seven of 2022. You can go out there, and you vote no. If you vote no, and other people disagree, uh, people say, you don't want term limits, then that's all, you can change this. And nothing changed, but if enough people don't say, you want, you don't want term limits, then that's all. Um, majority votes, and that's extremely conscious version of the United States, that's 100% American right there. Um, these are some of the proposals that I proposed. Again, this is just, it'd be like a, a framework, or we can work. Okay, this is the first proposal, we'd like the terms to stay the same. We have a city commission, the mayor, to serve three-year terms. Okay, so that would stay the same. This first proposal would give the city commissioner terms, three years, stay the same, plus the mayor, three years, I guess, stay the same. Term limit, this would be absolute, in other words, once you serve this, you cannot run again. This would be three, three-year terms, limits for both mayor and city commissioners. That means, we need as a city commissioner, we're being served nine years, that's about, you gotta do it anymore. If you want to run for a mayor, you can run for mayor, you can do your nine years of saving, and that's about, you gotta do it anymore than that. This will go into effect through 2024. So a lot of people are just trying to say, this is what it is, because we're trying to lock it in there. This is not even affecting it. Okay, this is not even affecting the mayor, because if he chooses to run again next year, we mean, you know, all of these years we've done, we need to cover this. So it's kind of, it's not a record, I've made or made one specifically, it's basically years, so we have this limited change requirement. Second proposal, this is the one that kind of bears on the cabinet, okay? This would be three-year terms again, insert three-year terms. Um, this would be for the city commissioner, mayor, and this would be absolute, you can't run anymore after this. So this would be four, three-year terms for both the offices, just like the cabinet, you would serve twelve years, twelve years, and for twenty-four years. I mean, in your office of twenty-four years, it's become a career. And that's the second proposal, and again, this will go into effect after the 2021 election. Third proposal, okay, it is, the length of term was the same, three years, three years, term limits. This would be one of the, the consecutive I was talking about. This would mean that you have a term limit of three years. Uh, I'm sorry, three, three years, I'm assuming you serve for ninety years. But then after those ninety years, you can't run again, that's what I talked about earlier, you not have a two-year off period, I mean, you've been running for six years. And then if you wanted to do again, say, you want to go back, you can run again, and you can serve two more terms, so for six, you're going to be able to, uh, uh, basically, I mean, like fifteen years max. Okay?
I got a question. I'm sorry, I got a question.
Sir?
I got a question. What if, uh, because we're, we're by district, what if I moved to a different district?
Move to a district, different district?
Does, does your term start all over again?
Actually, that's something we talked about, that's something you want to put that in there. I would say, uh, really not, because, I mean, the one is just a commission, so I would think that would count to a term. I would say that, that's my personal opinion, but if you want to work with that.
Well, I'm just, because what I find in my business, and, 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 I, I like, you know, you put like security in place, right? Basically, security, make sure, no matter how much I think about it, there's always that one person that say, ah, but they find a different way to, to, to do it. All right, to, to circumvent the system. So, I want to make sure whatever we proposed, that we look at it from whatever angle. To make sure that, like I said, that's the first question that came to my mind is, uh, what happens if I, if the argument be made, like, well, I, but I'm in a different district, I'm in district five, or, or, they, they done the road.
The thing about the proposal, I want to say, that's a good one. But the thing about this, it measures, it isn't, it's not specific toward the district, it says commission, city commission. So it wouldn't matter, uh, my thinking, it would, it would matter if whether you're district five, or you're district three, the point is for a commission. So once that term is done, you're gonna move, down, then if you're district five, I'll do a little bit of a check here, it doesn't matter.
Well, I would think, yes, I mean,
Yeah, we got to put it that way.
Just because, if you've ever been in court.
Okay. No, but I can, I can get it. So again, those are my proposals. Ultimately, like I said earlier, this is not about us making the choice. And I would hope each of us, single one of you, wants the city of Harlingen or the people of Harlingen to have this choice. Remember, if you disagree with term limits personally, you have the same right as close to 80,000 other, or, yeah, how many registered people are there, 40,000? Uh, 40,000, yeah, uh, the same rights as 40,000 other town commissioners who work there, and they'll, okay? This is all about, like, as you said, it's all about giving the people of Harlingen a choice. It's all a mess. Okay, and I don't see why anybody in the spirit of this about giving people a choice. Remember, you want to agree with the people, and the people have the choice. And is there any questions?
So I have a couple of concerns, obviously. So, I, I, first of all, I want to see if we can table this, because there's a couple more things that we need to come up with. Well, you're, you're saying three, three-year terms, and I had discussed maybe five three-year terms, one. And then, I'm confused, which is going to confuse the public, is, are they both obsolete, I mean, absolute, or, or is one of them? It doesn't matter, I can, if, if, if we-
I put that aside, I didn't want to be, I wanted you guys to have all the options. I wanted you to understand that there's the absolute, and there's the consecutive. Like, the first proposal, that one's consecutive, where you have the ninety years, and then there's a cooling off period, and then you have the other, uh, two terms that you should serve. So that's an option we could-
Okay, so, then, I keep hearing you want to give the citizens a choice, and I, I'm for term limits in, somewhat, but they, they already have, they're going to have a choice next May in my case. So, we're making it sound like we're not giving them a choice. We are giving them a choice. The other, the other issue I have and concern that I have is, the reason I want to table this, we still have till May of next, well, the next election of next year, is, I'd like to see, because we, we also have to consider, in term limits, we have to consider our districts. Because those are probably going to, more than likely going to change, if I'm not mistaken, because the consensus is going to change those districts, and that decision is going to come back to us as well. And I'm thinking, once we have our district, um, I guess, voted on or agreed to, then we can bring up the, the term limits.
Is that going to directly to what you're suggesting? The term that this is not a point is a moving commission. So it wouldn't matter if you were to do, or this be changed, or this is, you're supposed to serve.
So, are you, are you proposing to put up all the options for a vote?
Well, I'm, I'm, I just, I want to, that's what I wanted, I wanted to discuss this.
Well, let, let, in my opinion, you may sway some people. It's either, I don't like the all or, all or nothing approach, you know, when I was, like you say, you want to give the people a choice, then you need to put up different options. Right? Let's say you put up three options, or whatever, I mean, you have, I think, three up there now. And it goes to a vote, and then what if there's a, you know, there's a, well, if, 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 just like a case, uh, you have 51% of the vote, and then there's runoff, and you have to have two different options, I mean, like, runoff, yeah. You understand what I'm saying? I mean, uh, because I think she may have a problem with, he may not have a problem with term limits, he may just have a problem with the number of terms, or the, the years, I agree. So if you put up, like, you have multiple options, or the three options, put them on the vote, and the, the, the people decide how they want to vote on it. Are you, are you open to that? I'm just trying to-
Yeah, no, if you guys want to make a motion to propose all these three, I don't have, I mean, I, my personal preference would be probably the first one. Okay, that's my personal, but I understand you might, might not agree with that, maybe, uh, that's fine. Do you want to put all three there?
But there may be, yeah, there may be an option, right? But there may be an option that somebody will agree with, right? Like, like, like I say, uh, uh, again, there may be an option that, that, maybe they're going to vote no, but you know what, they can see this one, because this one is the one that best, they agree with. That makes sense. Because I don't think, I don't think we should decide, okay, we're going, we're only going to give this option. You know, and I, I, I really like your presentation, and you, you could give it, but, but you've obviously thought it out pretty well. But why not put either both of those options, or, 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 I guess, leave it the same, or option one, option two?
But I would recommend that, again, I'm, I'm either, you want to make a vote, but I would recommend that, again, this is just for, to make it easier, because you know what she said about the people, how about we just be told the third?
Well, well, yeah, but that, but that, there's still a third option, is, there's two options, and then there's, leave it the same.
Okay, important, important to make a motion that, hey, we, we agree to put it on, I make, I make a motion to, uh, to propose these three options to the, to the residents of Harlingen, term.
So, I, I need to say something here. So there would be three, basically, sub propositions, almost. I mean, there would be a measure for term limits, but then, what, what you're, what you all are talking about is not just, um, the implementation of term limits, but, but how.
Well, that's kind of like what you put on the, on the, where's my thing?
Well-
On the thing, you like, you gave two choices. Didn't you give like two choices, or you just put one?
No, I just put one.
Well, no, but in a way, you kind of put, well, no, in a way, because-
Well, no, because these all, these all fit together, and they can also be separated into, say, uh, commissioners and the mayor shall be limited to three, three-year terms of office, period. And then there's the option, if you want it,
For the consecutive?
To wait, yeah, to serve three, and then wait, and then run again. And then, of course, there's the provision regarding whether somebody who has served as commissioner can also serve as mayor after their terms run. Um, but as far as, as getting into the nitty-gritty as to
Years?
Whether it's going to be a consecutive or, um, or not.
Well, you already put it in the, the way you made it, you already made it as consecutive. You put it right, you just-
I did, yeah.
Yeah.
So, Rainey, can I make a motion to, to table this, so that way we can better understand? Because it's a good presentation, but I still have some, some questions that I'd like for all of us to discuss, maybe, maybe an executive session, or, I don't know, but I'd like to table it, so that way we can study this more. And then I'd like to come back and give you, or whoever-
Okay, there's, there's a motion to table.
Just a second.
Second. A second, uh, there's no discussion on motion to table, so all those favor say aye.
I'm discussing, you did that last time, and I'm also-
Well, there is a motion and a second, and table's not discussable, so.
Okay, but-
Were you actually making the, the motion?
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Making the motion.
To table it, aye.
Aye, aye, okay, all right, out of sta, yeah, out of this table. Thank you, you, uh, obviously put a lot of time into this.
So, wait, if we're going to be tabling it, then when would we be talking about this again, because the, the-
You take it from the table at the next meeting.
On the next meeting, okay, cool, okay.
Item 10 is, uh, public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading, rezoned, for residential multifamily into district plan development district. Allow for a multifamily residential use for lots 5 through 16, block 1, lots 5 through 6, and 11 through 12, block 2, lots 5 through 23, block 3, and lots 1 through 9, block 4, Harlingen Park Business Center subdivision located on the east side of Expressway 77 and Loop 499.
Yes, Mayor, this is a subdivision located along the Expressway 77, uh, next to the John Deere Dealership. And this is a subdivision that developed like 15 years ago for industrial purposes, but it never developed for industrial purposes as originally, uh, intended. So last year in April, the owners, uh, rezoned the properties to, uh, general, general retail these lots, and then the rest multifamily residential. And we already have apartment complexes going up in these lots here. So it's beginning to develop as multifamily residential. Uh, and so there's finally construction in this subdivision after 15 years. The request is to set up a, a plan development district to allow more flexibility with the setbacks for these lots. Because we have some irregular lots that, if you apply the setbacks for multifamily residential, you have a limited building area. So that's the purpose of the, uh, application for the plan development district. And this explains what, what, uh, the setbacks will be for the different types of lots. That's the aerial photograph of the subdivision. The, uh, view from the expressway. And these are the apartments that are already going up in the subdivision. This went before the planning and, planning and zoning commission on July 14, and no one spoke in opposition to the plan development district request. The applicants spoke in support of the PD district and explained that they needed the PD zoning with the reduced setback requirements to have more flexibility for, for the irregular shaped lots for them to develop as residential duplexes. Commissioner Garcia expressed a much concern with the request and mentioned that the green area that will be lost, uh, as a result, the subdivision will be more prone to flooding during future rain events. After some discussion, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the PD district with a 3 to 2 vote.
Okay, uh, we have a public hearing, uh, item A. I'll open the public hearing. I know that Mr. Garcia has signed up to speak for this, so if you'll come forward and speak during the public hearing. Please go ahead, thank you.
Before I start my public hearing, I do have a packet of my own little presentation for everybody to get a better understanding before you make a crucial vote. I'd like to pass these out to the city commission, and I also have a pin drive, and I've sent a, uh, an email to, uh, IT to, to put it up here as well. Can we go ahead and facilitate that? I have to let you start. Control here, this, is this, uh, this work? What is, yeah? Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, oh, am I on?
You're waiting for your.
Thank you, yes, you can start.
Spotting him up.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, commissioners. I'm against approval for rezoning lots in said subdivision from multifamily to planned development for two specific reasons. Mr. Javier Cervantes listed my second reason, but let me go ahead and explain why. These are, both my reasons are life, safety, and quality, quality of life issues. And my first issue is, so we can understand what they're asking, is setbacks. We've got multifamily are required twenty feet, they're asking to go to ten feet in these irregular-shaped lots. Most of the irregular-shaped lots are corner lots. There's a reason why corner lots need a twenty-foot setbacks, and that's because of a site triangle that specifically says in our own ordinance that nothing shall be erected in such a manner as to limit or obstruct the site distance of a motorist entering or leaving the subdivision. Also, they're asking that dwellings in excess of two shall not be less than, oh, so this is another requirement. In corner lots specifically, they're asking, in these irregular-shaped lots for side lots, they're asking to minimize it down to five feet, when in actuality, we should be increasing the side lots at corner lots, these irregular-shaped lots, to fifteen feet. So we're going in the opposite, opposite direction of what our own code actually specifies. So that's, that's number one, that wasn't in the meeting minutes from the ordinance, I mean, from the P&amp;Z meeting. And number two, it floods in the area.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna extend the courtesy to Mr. Garcia to continue his presentation, but.
Just need one more minute.
Yeah.
One more minute, I'll keep it brief.
Because you're a member of the P&amp;Z.
Okay, well, thank you. And so, it floods in the general area so much that it actually, a picture of it actually made it, just made it into the comprehensive plan report on our website. And that's the picture on the left right here, if I have a pointer. This is about a mile south of the subdivision, you can see stranded cars. Now, on May nineteenth, there was a similar rain event that was, and that's actually wrong, it's actually a one-year rain event, actually, I'm sorry, it's right. And a one-year rain event is actually defined as a one-hundred percent chance that a storm of that magnitude will happen any day of, any given year, any given day of any year. And with this event right here on May nineteenth, you can see that there was also a car that was stranded. And this is just a mile south. Now, let's get a little bit closer, on the top right, this is the entrance to the subdivision. And I didn't know that this was coming to the P&amp;Z, I just drive around and take pictures during rain events. But on the top right, you can see that the entrance to the subdivision is already flooded. This is without.
The construction, correct?
Yes, and that's the construction of the current, they have about six of them up right now, this is just three. So this was just by chance that I had this photo, that's why it's not very close, but you can see that it is flooded.
I can ask a question.
Yes.
Did we not require that development, when they, when they made those apartments, or duplexes, whatever they are, to improve the drainage as part of the construction? Is that not part of that?
Okay, I stop my time.
It's an existing, it's a subdivision that was existing, that has the drainage system in place from, when it was originally developed fifteen years ago.
So, but it was originally developed as a.
For industrial purposes.
And then it changed to?
To multifamily with some lots general retail, and then the front lots remain industrial.
And now they're proposing to do, change it to what, plan?
Plan development district.
And by doing that, if I understand your, your, the corner example, are we, are we, we do see restrictions on the drainage requirements by doing that?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Garcia's argument is that by reducing the setbacks, you're losing green areas, which will.
Which reduces the drain.
Which will generate more water, yeah. It could, it could create more.
I'm sure I've finished it.
Okay, please, please continue, please continue, Mr. Garcia.
And, and so, so I just wanted to point out, these real-life pictures, recent pictures, this was not a, this was not a one-hundred-year storm event, or a five-hundred-year storm event, or even a twenty-five or fifty-year storm event. This is what would be considered by, in engineering terms, oh, like, there's a, oh, that's, I'm sorry. On, on the National Weather Service, you got a twenty-four-hour total on May nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-one of less than three inches. And that is defined as a one-year storm event. One year, if you were to go up on the grid, you see that's a one-year annual exceedance probability, and on top you have one, two, five, ten, twenty-five, all the way up to a thousand-year storm event. So this is a, a frequent rain, and my point that I'm trying to make is that, and that's just some terminology there to understand, my point, oh, so here's the plat that was developed in two thousand and six as industrial, as Mr. Cervantes mentioned. And the point that I also want to make is that the drainage infrastructure is in place. Nothing's going to be improved when, we don't have a site plan for if they're going to be submitting a duplex, triplex, quadplex, fiveplex, or sixplex like they're advertising. There's no site plan, that I know of, that, so far, the staff has, has told me that. And when they're submitting for this next sixplex, there's no drainage plan that's required per lot. So how do we handle the drainage? So, the point that I'm trying to make is, the area is already very flood-prone without any buildings on it. We're going to already put buildings on it now without this request. Approving this request is just a cherry on the top of exacerbating the flood situation. So that, that's my presentation. And I would also like to point out that in the plat regarding drainage, Cameron County Drainage District number five, signed this, it's their standard terminology, hereby approves this subdivision, the condition that the district does not warrant the adequacy of its drainage system in case of heavy rainfall, and that it will not be called upon by present or future owners of any lot or lots in this subdivision to correct any drainage or flooding problems on any of the lots in said subdivision. So Cameron County is indemnifying themselves, they're saying they're, they're not going to ever be responsible for any flooding, so who will be? We will. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. I'll maybe leave anybody else to sign up for this, so I want to close the public hearing and go to item B, which is a consideration of possible action. Okay, please come forward. State your name and your, your residence address.
Yes, Mayor.
I'll reopen the public hearing.
Thank you. Ivan Garcia with Rio Delta Engineering, I represent the developer, Mr. Lalo Lopez, he's here. I'm a professional engineer, professional land surveyor with extensive experience in land development issues. The reason why we are requesting this, we're putting this request in front of you, is because the request was just made for the irregular lots, which is really the problematic lots. By reducing the setback, we just want the area to be more flexible to work up to a functional site plan, right? Last time I checked, this was a zoning case, not a development or building permit issue, right? So with the zoning, we still need to meet all the construction requirements for the City of Harlingen from engineering and everything else, including drainage. This is a subdivision that was built fifteen years ago, the setbacks for the industrial use was zero. So if anything, we are improving the permeable cover of what the previous use was. So one thing that I would like to mention is that we are aware of the concerns that Mr. Garcia has on the drainage and everything else. We were there this afternoon during the rain, and the entrance is now flooded. That picture shows some.
I just, I was there, I lived there.
Yes.
It's very flooded.
Okay, well.
I lived there, I go down that street, I, I have an excursion I have to go get, so I could drive through it.
Okay, well, we were there this afternoon, and Mr. Lopez has some videos, and we didn't see any flooding there on the entrance. But again, the, it's an existing issue that, that it's there, that will not be caused, I believe, by the development of the, of the fourplexes or the duplexes, in the sense that it still has to meet all the criteria for construction requirements.
May I ask you a question? Is this by secluded acres, Spanish acres?
Uh, I'm not sure.
I'm asking a Spanish.
Okay.
Yeah, because, remember, we had that issue back in the June.
But does it butt up against? No, you have to pause the great placement, this is seventy-seven, because.
My concern is putting more water in that neighborhood.
It's immediately downstream.
Because I know that, especially along that highway, even on the other side of, in fact, I gotta give props to somebody, one, a member of the audience that was filming during the last rain event, on the other side of the Expressway, people going down the wrong way on the Expressway to get away from the flooding. That was you, I see, I saw, and I saw that post. So this is a very big concern, because for some reason, and we've made improvements to the loop, and we're, big improvements there, but I don't think we fixed that, that section, for whatever reason, between Wilson and, and, and Big Matt on Road, that hasn't been fixed, right? Yeah, and it's big. So, I got you, so I'm just, was trying to get clear.
Okay, Ian, do you want to finish up?
Yes, basically, just for closing remarks, the, again, the reason why we're asking for this rezoning is just for those irregular lots that are really hard to develop a site plan, it's, some of them, you cannot even fit a building. So that's, that's the only reason. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak for this public hearing? Nobody, nobody else wants to speak for the, all right, then I'll close the public hearing. And item B, which is consideration of possible action, approved ordinance of first reading to rezone from residential multifamily M2 district to planned development PD district to allow for multifamily residential use for lots five through sixteen, block one, and lots five through six, eleven through twelve, block two, lots five through twenty-three, block three, and lots one through nine, block four, Harlingen North Business Center subdivision located on the east side of Expressway seventy-seven. Have you heard, did you want to say something else?
No.
Okay, ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen to rezone from residential multifamily district to planned development district to allow for multifamily use for lots five through sixteen, block one, lots five and six, and eleven and twelve, block two, lots five through twenty-three, block three, and lots one through nine, block four, Harlingen North Business Center subdivision located on the east side of Expressway seventy-seven, south of Loop forty, four ninety-nine, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
I, I like to vote against.
Is that a motion?
What's your motion?
I like the motion against, against the rezon.
I second. Or, no, we just vote approval, then we just say against it, right?
I would call for a motion to approve. Let me see.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to dis.
Well, yeah, but just, when you call for a motion, it doesn't mean you're voting for it.
I got you.
Okay, so, motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the ordinance.
No, you're, you're gonna, no, hold on, you're letting them make the change. We don't want to adopt that ordinance.
What, what we're trying to do is, or, let me see if I'm doing this right, if I make a motion to approve, it gets second, we can all vote no?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, you're just calling for a vote on, on the question, it doesn't mean you're going to vote one way or the other.
Okay, just vote against the, just vote against, even though you made the motion, you can still vote against the ordinance.
Okay, so, motion approved?
Second.
All right, all those favor, say aye. Those opposed, aye.
Aye.
All right. Then item eleven is a public hearing, considering ordinance on first reading to conduct city-initiated rezoning for several properties generally located along FM five oh seven between Loop four ninety-nine and FM five oh eight. Have you heard?
Yes, Mayor, this, the city did some annexations in two thousand and one and two thousand and five, and these properties were not sold, so we're doing a city-initiated zonings for that, for the area along FM five oh seven, between FM five oh eight and Loop four ninety-nine. Most of the area is a zone, is used for farming. We had a public meeting with the property owners, but the initial intent was to zone that those areas are R1, single-family residential. But we had a public meeting with the property owners, and the property owner here requested a general retail district, which, there's general, general retail district across the street, so we, we agreed to make that change. And he also owns this property here, and he asked for multifamily, so it's a, it's a nice transition from general retail. The rest are proposed for R1. There is a mobile home park over here, that is, right here, that we're, is zoning correctly, so we're proposing to do correct zoning to mobile home district for this, for this property, the rest to zone them R1, single-family residential.
Okay, I'm gonna call for, open the public hearing, no one signed up on this side, I believe.
Oh, I'm Planning and Zoning Commission, recommended approval.
This ordinance. Hearing, no one, I'll close the public hearing, and go to item B, which is consideration of possible action, approved ordinance, a first reading to conduct city-initiated rezoning for several properties generally located along FM five oh seven between Loop four ninety-nine and Loop FM five oh eight. Ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, city-initiated rezoning for several properties generally located along FM five oh seven between Loop four ninety-nine and FM five oh eight, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, the motion carries, item twelve, consideration of possible action to adopt for a resolution, directing staff to initiate proceedings for the voluntary annexation of one point four seven acres of land, being the right-of-way of Dilworth Road commencing at the northwest corner of block one of Emil Johnson subdivision, recorded volume eleven, page forty-nine, Matt Perkins, Cameron County.
Yes, Mayor, we have a, a two-lap subdivision in process, in process right now on Dilworth Road, south of Garrett. It's a, it's a two-lap, two-lap subdivision for residential purposes, and the property owner is requesting to be annexed to the City of Harlingen, but the property is not contiguous to the city limits, so the only way we can annex the property is to also annex the roadway, which is Dilworth Road from, from the south end of the subdivision to Garrett. And the county has no objections to annex it.
So the green area above it, north of it, that, that, all that, right there, is that city?
No, it's county. This is county, this is county.
How are we skipping them?
So the, the only way to make the.
We're connected with the road, we're taking into the road also.
This, the Dilworth.
The road, is there, is it?
Yes, it's existing, and it's, it's in good condition.
It's in really good condition.
The, the next item is related to that, right?
Yes.
It's the actual property owners that want to be annexed to the City of Harlingen, and so you're just trying to connect, this item is just connecting the two pieces of property, so that we can do that voluntary annexation.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, the motion carries, item thirteen, consideration of possible actions to adopt for a resolution, directing staff to prepare annexation service agreement and initiate proceedings for voluntary annexation of the proposed Serenity Estates subdivision located on the west side of Dilworth Road, south of Garrett Road, African Eddie Barneski and Jennifer Barneski Smith.
It's the same, the same item, it's, first was the road, and now is a private property.
Is there a motion to?
Someone?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, item fourteen, consideration of possible action to authorize city manager to sign sales order agreement to purchase following software modules from Central Square Building Permits, code enforcement and planning and engineering at total price of one hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars.
Yes, Mayor, we are, why, why do we need this? Our current software for building permits is obsolete, we are not able to accept building permits online, applications online, we're not able to issue permits online. The existing, if the existing software works properly, it takes the, the permit clerks seven to ten minutes to issue us a simple building permit. The software will allow us to be more efficient with our time. Contractors and developers, property owners, will be able to track the status of their permits online. And sometimes I get complaints of why, you know, electricians, why can't I get my, my permits online, why do I have to go to, to the building to purchase my, my permits?
How long will this take, tell me? How long will it take?
It will take a few months, a few months to.
So can you talk me through that process?
Excuse me?
Can you talk me through the process of, once it gets, like, if it gets approved, when do we purchase, what's the lead time, and when, when do you expect the drainage?
If everything goes well, we should be operational. If everything goes well, we should be operational or online in six, in approximately six months.
But before the end of the year?
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item fifteen, consideration of possible action to approve request for qualifications document for performance audit services and authorize staff to proceed with the advertisement.
Mayor, Commissioner, so this is something that the commissioner had requested. So this is a draft copy of an RFQ. It does allow for the city council to request a variety of different types of audits, including financial, compliance, operational, investigative, and performance. It is through a task order system. So what we'd like to do, I think you have a copy of the RFQ, I do have a presentation, not gonna go through it, I know we've been here a long time, but you do have a copy of the RFQ. We'd be happy to make any revisions. What we'd like to do is post this next Sunday, starting next Sunday, and for twice over a fifteen-day period, and get the responses and bring all the, the responses, responders back in front of the city council for formal presentations. The staff is recommending approval of the draft RFQ so we can begin the advertising process.
But is the difference between, is the weight label performance audit and forensic audit?
That's a question for the auditors, Commissioner. There are different types of audits.
Right.
Yeah, and, and that's why my understanding was that you guys wanted to get them in front of you so you can ask those questions.
So the, the people who are asking for RFQ will be qualified to do a forensic audit?
All that is part of the RFQ, they have to provide their minimum qualifications.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's in the PowerPoint, I can go through it.
I don't know, I.
I don't mind going through it.
I just, I just wanna make sure that I had, I understand it.
And this is the?
This is the one that we would advertise, starting next weekend.
And then it has to go up on me, how much, twice?
It has to be advertised twice over a fifteen-day period.
Okay.
So can we go through this whole thing right now? I'm just kidding.
Sure.
I'm just kidding, that's fine.
When does it close?
Page one.
When, when would it close?
It, it'll come, the RFQ deadline is August thirtieth.
Yeah. We are.
And so it'll be the first meeting in September that we will all.
They're gonna go up basically.
I think it'd be better to do a workshop like we normally do, where they come before you and make full-blown presentations.
Yes, yes, set it up.
So there is no ranking, there is criteria that there's, has to provide you all, but they, all of them will be coming before you for presentations.
Okay.
So we're looking for an approval for the RFQ.
All right, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item sixteen, covered item seventeen, consideration of possible action approved of proposed list of streets for the twenty-two street improvement program.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the upcoming street improvement program. We've got several candidates on the list. Monizuma Road from FM one oh seven to west of the city limits, Summerfield Lane from the, the whole circle, Twenty-first Street, which is kind of a little J, from Vincent to the end of Twenty-and-a-half Street, Commerce Street from Fair Park to Harrison, Ninth Street from Austin to Jefferson, Daniel Circle, Clifford, that whole section there, and the, the section between Harrison and Tyler on Commerce, T Street between Wilson and Lozano, Taft Avenue from the Frontage Road to Third Street, Tucker Road from Lincoln to the end, and Louisiana Street from the, basically from the highway to, to the, to the Calle Rien, so. That being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
This is the list of streets for next fiscal year, for next budget.
Is there a motion to approve the proposed list?
Some.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item eighteen, consideration of possible action to award RFQ twenty, twenty-one, thirteen professional engineering services for the Jefferson Avenue storm sewer improvement project phase one to a professional engineering firm with demonstrated competence and authorized city manager to enter into a professional service contract with the firm.
Yes, so this item is in relation to the Jefferson Street Storm Sewer Improvement. This project is definitely gonna add to the resilience of the city to, to be able to handle large storm events. We, we went through the RFQ process on this one, and we, we, the evaluation committee ranked four firms that had submitted on this. We have the, the order provided here, and we're recommending that the commission approve allowing us to start with the, the highest-ranked firm.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Andy about this? Is there a, is there a motion to award the RFQ?
No. There's still three. No.
We have a form.
You're fine.
We have not lost form.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
Some.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Yeah, we're not tired, we're good.
Okay, so motion, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, consideration of possible action to approve interlocal agreement between the city of Harlingen, Cameron County District Number Five, for participation in regional watershed flood protection planning study and authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement.
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. This is a continuation of the interlocal agreements that we are doing with the partnering cities in our flood, flood drainage study, the regional flood point, uh, paint study, I'm sorry, drainage study. The, the, interlocal agreement before you is with the Drainage District Number Five, who has agreed to fund the portion or portion of our matching funds to a dollar amount of fifteen thousand dollars. We will get some in-kind services from them too, and the staff is recommending approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next, two items are similar. Consideration of item twenty, consideration of possible action to approve interlocal agreement between the city of Harlingen and the city of Mercedes for participation in regional watershed flood protection planning study and authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement.
Similarly, Mayor, like you mentioned, this is, the partner city would be the city of Mercedes, and they have agreed to fund sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars, which is again, part of our matching funds, to the Texas Water Development Board for this drainage study.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any other discussion? This is kind of historic, I think, I think this may be the first interlocal agreement with the city in Hidalgo County. So I think it's kind of, it's really cool that we're, that we're doing this.
It truly is a regional study, Mayor.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item twenty-one, consideration of possible action approved in interlocal agreement between the city of Harlingen, Town of Combs, providing participation in a regional watershed flood protection planning study and authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal.
Yes, Mayor, this item again is with the city of Combs, or Town of Combs. Their matching contribution or contribution would be twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and two dollars. Staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Consideration, item twenty-two.
Thank you.
Consideration of possible action adopted ordinance approving a negotiated resolution between the city of Harlingen and Texas Gas Service regarding companies April twenty-nine, twenty-one, cost of service adjustment filing, clearing existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting new tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with negotiated settlement, and finding rates to be set off by the tariffs to be just reasonable, providing for the recovery of cities and TGS as reasonable and necessary rate case expenses. Okay?
Mayor, Members of the Commission, on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, Texas Gas Service applied for a cost of service adjustment, a COSA tariff increase for rural Grand Valley cities. They submitted a rate increase of four point two million dollars. The city is contracted with Thomas Mercado and Karen Alipa to negotiate the increase, and he was able to get it down to three point eight million dollars, a total savings of four hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. So staff is recommending approval of the resolution, and it must be adopted before July twenty-eighth, where it should participate in the cost of. Staff recommend approval.
Motion, second.
Well, we need to, we need to read the caption.
It's a resolution, Mayor?
It's an ordinance.
Oh.
It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance approving a negotiated resolution.
Sorry.
That's okay, it's, it's late.
Been a long wait.
An ordinance of the city commission council of the city of Harlingen, Texas, approving a negotiated resolution between the city and Texas Gas Service, TGS, or the company, regarding the company's April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, cost of service adjustment, COSA filing, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting new tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, and finding the rates to be set by the attached tariffs to be just unreasonable, providing for the recovery of the cities and TGS as reasonable and necessary rate case expenses, adopting a savings clause determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, declaring an effective date, repealing any prior ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company's and the city's legal counsel.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item twenty-three, consideration of possible action to authorize the MIS department to transfer the city's mobile services from AT&amp;T to T-Mobile or Verizon to take advantage of first responders' promotion and better rates.
Mayor, Commissioners, staff is asking if we table this item. We still have some additional research to do on the proposals. They're offering different types of packages, and I think it's best that we go through them a little more in detail so that we know what exactly we're getting. So we ask that we table this one more time.
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item twenty-four, consideration of possible action to adopt for a resolution approving the one-year action plan budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, year forty-seven of the Community Development Block Grant CDBG program in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, year twenty-seven, the whole investment partnership program, and the proposed solidity plan and strategy for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five for the cities of Harlingen, Sandy, Brownsville.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, Sandy, Sandy is passing out a revised resolution. There were some changes to the original resolution that was submitted to your packet. We did send a revised copy to your inboxes yesterday, just in case you haven't had a chance to see it. She's handing out a revised resolution. This is a copy of the ad that was placed in the newspaper. It does have all the projects that were approved by the city commission at the, at the last CDBG meeting we had. This is a copy of the, the funded projects the city commission approved. The original resolution did not include the two hundred thousand dollars for the fire truck, so we included in the resolution that she just handed out. And we also increased the amount for the Harlingen Sports Complex to one hundred and fourteen thousand. I think the, the original allocation was a hundred and three. We did that to make sure that the CDBG funding total matched up to the nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The remaining funds stayed the same as the commission had approved for the home program, the Robin Law Program and the program income, for three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Total allocations you're approving tonight are for one point three million dollars. And again, these are the projects the city commission approved at the last meeting, so we're asking that you approve the, the project just present.
Just to be clear, the advertisement was correct, it's just what was in your packet was incorrect, all we're doing is correcting that.
Motion approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. We have already addressed items twenty-five through twenty-eight, twenty-nine, board appointments.
I have none.
Apologies. For the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, Delia Cavasus-Gomez. For the Health, Harlingen Advisory Board, once again, Delia Cavasus-Gomez. For the Parks and Recreation, we're looking at, actually, I am, it's Leandra Yadiel-Reese. For the hotel, no, 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 it's the convention.
That's.
Thank you.
You said hotel.
Convention. Rochelle Patel. And then for the, go ahead, here, give me one second. There's the CD. No, CD.
CDBG.
Community, keeping, says, and getting, Delia Cavasus-Gomez on that board.
How many times did you appoint Delia Cavasus?
I think we have an ordinance.
We have an ordinance.
You can only do two.
Yeah.
She's here, which ones do you want to be on?
Well, I'll tell you what, we'll go ahead and remove her from the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee.
Two.
She already serves in one, did you appoint her for one?
No, I didn't put her in.
I would have to check, and then I would tell you whether she qualifies.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, well, is there?
Any verification?
Okay.
Second.
You may want to write some of that, help, help to say.
I will.
A little more, with a little more detail. Thank you. All right, we have motion, we've voted, right?
Yes.
All right. So go to item thirty, which is executive closed session on the following items. A, consideration pursuant to section five fifty-one point oh seven-two, government code regarding the purchase value of property located at one oh two T Street for economic development and other public purposes. B, attorney consultation pursuant to section five one point oh seven-one, one and two, Texas government code for legal advice and counsel connection lawsuit style, the number of Sun Valley Aviation versus City of Harlingen at Valley National Airport. C, Valley Attorney Consultation pursuant to section five one point oh seven-one-two, Texas government code received legal advice and counsel connection with cities' rights and its religious obligations under chapter one forty-three of one seventy-four of the Texas Local Government Code as related to contract negotiations to the city and the Harlingen Professional Firefighters Association. Is there a motion to go into executive session on those three?
Motion, second.
All right, we have motion, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna be consulting with our attorney in the executive session for a little while. There are two possible action items, come back, and the commission may take action on those items. Thank you.
Executive session, yes, thirty-five. And we've only got thirty-one, consideration of appropriate action, any authorization for the probable purchase of the real property located in the T Street. Is there a motion to authorize the bank to negotiate?
Some.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item thirty-two, consideration of appropriate action to clarify the bargaining labor agreement between the Harlingen Professional Firefighters Association, I A F F Local Number Thirty-four Oh Four in the city of Harlingen, Texas, effective October first, twenty twenty-one. There are citizens, yes, Amanda.
I think so.
Kamala Alves. Kamala Alves. Please step forward and say your name.
Good evening, my name is Kamala Alves, I live at one five three Wilson Road. My name is Kamala Alves, I'm co-founder and director of programs for Valley Haven Emergency Children's Shelter, which is located here in Harlingen as well. I'm also a member of the General League of Harlingen, where I currently serve on the board as president-elect. I'm here today to speak on behalf of agenda item thirty-two. I one hundred percent support the Harlingen Fire Department. The dedicated professional. The dedicated professionals of the Harlingen Fire Department are some of the finest men and women among us. They go beyond the call of duty. Harlingen firefighters do a lot more than just putting out fires and readily sacrificing their own well-being to secure the safety of others. They are dependable members of the community who assist in a wider range of situations than you might expect. They are rescuers, community leaders, they offer social support and are role models. They are there to help in all kinds of emergency and non-emergency situations. I know all this because I've seen it firsthand. Before Valley Haven opened, they volunteered and helped us build the dream playground for our shelter. Anytime they have barbecue fundraisers, they always remember us and drop off leftover food and beverages for the kids to enjoy. When the pandemic hit and there was a lot of uncertainty and panic shopping going on, we got to continue focusing on our main priority, which is the children. And I did not have to worry about how I was going to possibly find essential items like eggs, milk and ground beef, especially when there were limits being placed on these items. And we had 36 children and staff to feed. Again, they thought of us. I got a call saying they were placing an order of essential items and asked what we needed. It was such a relief and a blessing. We lost power for 74 hours during the freeze this year. After hearing we were without power and needed additional generators to power our refrigerators and freezers, a Harlingen firefighter provided us with what we needed. The unfortunate reality is that the compensation they receive often does not reflect the level of personal risk and sacrifices public server, ser, sermons make every single day. Our firefighters who readily grow themselves in harm's way to protect others deserve fair and competitive compensation. They are of extreme value to me, Valley Haven and our community. It isn't enough to just praise them for the good that they do, but we must pay and protect them as well. Thank you and thank you all for everything you do.
Thank you very much. Is there, no more system negotiations yet, so? Is there? Is there a motion to gratify the labor agreement which has been approved by the Firefighters Association?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed?
Aye.
Aye, I'll break the tie. Mark agreement is approved. Break it ahead. Thank you all. We've been here tonight and, uh, thank you to our firefighters. So we're adjourned. Good night, everybody.